Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Would you like to lead us in the pledge today?
Sure.
You can go over to the microphone over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio. Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chirella.
Here.
Mrs. De Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Kalapanowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mrs. Carino. Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you, sir.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening?
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 12th, 2018, at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. And before we get into the agenda, I have two things to say right now. First is I'd like to welcome back Mrs. Patty Lang. We have not seen Patty since May. She's been battling an illness, and we are very, very happy to have you back and healthy.
Thank you.
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Kathy. I want to thank my fellow board members especially for your support for the last few months. For those of you in the public who are not aware, on June 6th, I suffered my third stroke. Most people are lucky enough not to have one, but as an overachiever, three sounded like a good number. The third stroke has taken its toll. I'm very fortunate to be here, and I do apologize that I wasn't able to fully fulfill my role as a board member, but for the next couple of months, I might not be here for entire meetings, but please know that I'm doing my best to come back and do what's best for the students of Monroe, and I appreciate the support that I've gotten from members of the community and the feedback. And please, if you can do one thing, please learn fast and teach it to your children, teach it to your family members, because my 13-year-old daughter recognized that I was having the stroke, and her quick action saved my life and prevented much greater disabilities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty, and welcome back. We have a cake for you. And now I have to make a point of correction. It has come to my attention that a member of the Board of Education and/or a member of the public will be calling for my resignation as president of the Board of Education at this evening's meeting. Please excuse my voice, I've had a cold for the last five days, I'm still trying to get over it. To be very clear, I will not resign my position as president. There has been a lot of misinformation that has been posted on social media and stated during public forums during previous board meetings. I wish to set the record straight. I have been an active member of this school community for the past 30 years, having served in various capacities such as officer of the elementary, middle, and high school PTAs, sometimes at the same time I've done all three; officer of the Monroe Education Foundation; eight years of service on the Monroe Municipal Recreation Advisory Board; representative of the PTAs to the Community Relations Committee; member of various district committees including DEC, Human Relations, Teacher Recognition, School Goals, Music Parents, and Booster Club; member of every negotiations committee since 2000; member of the Board of Education for 19 years, serving as president of the Board for nine, and serving as vice president for four years. Throughout the past 30 years, I have served in these positions in involuntary unpaid capacity. I have faithfully and honestly served the school community throughout this time, and I have devoted countless hours of my time for the betterment of this school district, and many times ignoring what has gone on with my children, so that I could be with our children over here. The first piece of advice that I ever received as a board member was to always make decisions based on what is best for children, even if I was the only person to do that. I have always followed that advice and have always put our students first. I have consistently supported the exceptional staff in this district in order to ensure the educational advancement of all students in the district. My record as a Board of Education member over the past 19 years speaks for itself. During my tenure, my fellow board members and I have accomplished the following, and this is just some of the things that have been accomplished: enhanced curriculum, including expanding honors and AP offerings, and expanding co-curricular clubs and athletics, so that all students feel a connection to the school. In fact, different school districts come to Monroe to observe Monroe's best practices both in and out of the classroom; the passage of the referendum and the building of Oak Tree School under my presidency, on time and under budget, with the money that was saved going back to the public in tax relief; enhanced in-district special education offerings resulting in the transition of many out-of-district special education students back to the home schools; enhanced technology in the district through the use of iPads and laptops in the classroom; expanded the in-district transportation fleet, which is now giving us the majority of our transportation routes in district; the passage of two referenda and the building of the new high school, including involvement in a four-year legal battle over the land acquisition, again coming in on time, under budget, and the surplus going back to the taxpayers; designed the framework with the Jamesburg Board President for the Jamesburg Agreement, which ended in expensive and protracted litigation in the best interests of all students in the high school; requested that the business administrator look at the feasibility of hiring in-district counsel as opposed to utilizing an out-of-district law firm; supported the installation of stadium lights and two artificial fields that allowed for tiering of events and are shared by this district and the community, and also for the first time, we were able to have nighttime games in our community, which we had never had before; implemented the annual budget philosophy meeting, giving the Board more to say in the operating budget; supported the implementation of the in-district Falcon Care and Early Childhood Education Programs as enterprising funds, which have made money for the district that we use to offset some of the costs in our operating budget; participated in professional development for board members every year in my 19 years of service, attaining the recognition of master board member. That is not accomplished by too many board members in the state of New Jersey. I believe that there should be a good relationship between the Board of Education and the township government in order for us to make Monroe the best community it can possibly be for everybody. However, at no time have I ever forfeited my independent judgment as a Board of Education member to anyone at any time. I categorically deny the false allegations and misinformation that has been circulated about me. I hold my integrity and my self-respect in the highest regard, and I always have and always will continue to make decisions in the best interests of the children and the entire school community. Once again, to be very clear, I have no intention of resigning my position of Board President. We are supposed to be role models for children, so we need to stop all this nonsense, focus on the reason that each of us was elected to do a job, to educate our children in Monroe. So at this time, we're going to go to the approval of the minutes on the agenda, which is number five. Is there a motion as second? Mr. Ryback, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. De Mayo. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, we will have a hand vote. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, excuse me, four, five, six, seven. All opposed?
Can I, madam, can I ask why we're having a hand vote and not a roll call vote?
Because in the last few months, we've had a lot of misinformation, it's been hard to know who's voting for what, so...
I would ask that we have a roll call vote on these things.
We can do that in the future.
I agree.
Um, abstains? Any abstentions? Mrs. Lang is abstaining. Any recusals? None. Okay, at this time, we will have a...
No, we have the public, you have the closed session minutes, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me know that. The approval of the closed session minutes for August 22nd, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. De Mayo.
Sorry.
Mr. Ryback.
I have a question.
Ms. Arminio.
There were, in the packet, we received the minutes of the closed session, and then on the board docs, it was redacted, and what was redacted did not seem to me to be confidential was talking about.
Do you know what you're speaking about?
Yeah. I didn't understand why that would have been redacted. I pulled it out of board docs...
I only read the ones that were included with this.
I know. That's my point. My point is if we're voting on something, we should know what we're voting on, and the redactions had to do with Dr. Alvick, something she was talking about, clubs. I don't know that that was confidential.
Sidebar?
No, it was not the sidebar, not, no, not in the 20s.
I'm sorry, I'm not following, but I will tell you that all the redactions go through, not only myself, but the board attorney also.
Okay, well, I have both here, so, and they both are August, I mean, if you can pass this on.
May I suggest that you could abstain on the minutes, and you're welcome to send an email for clarification?
Well, no, because once, if they get approved, then it doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, I mean, had the question been posed before the meeting, I certainly could have had clarification, but I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Okay.
I don't know what the redaction is.
Well, the first part is the unredacted, so I don't see why the second part on the board doc should be redacted. Can we include that now? I mean, so my thing, what I would like to add to the closed session minutes, our attorney is here, maybe she'd like to take a look.
I don't think that would be appropriate, Mrs. Arminio.
Why not? If our attorney is here, and, do you...
With all respect, the appropriate time to address changes in the minutes or questions would be before the meeting via question through email.
No, this is a public, this is for the public.
We don't have the resources here to be able to answer some of that or have a consultation while we're voting.
Well, okay, I would like to say that, I believe, if you want to pass that around, I don't see why those things should be redacted.
Can we table?
Yeah, I'll table, you want to table the, I'd like to vote to table the closed session minutes.
You want to make a motion to table?
Yes, I make a motion to table the closed session minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russo.
So we'll have a vote. We'll have a roll call on tabling the closed session minutes until the next board meeting.
We need a vote for that. You can pass that back to me, please. You can look at it.
Motion to table is a priority motion. We'll go right to a vote. Motion was moved by Mrs. Arminio, seconded by Mr. Russo. Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo.
No.
Mr. Chirella.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang. Mr. Braverman.
No.
Mr. Rutske.
You vote to redact.
Can you phrase the question again?
The motion is to table the minutes.
So yes. Yes, I vote yes.
Vote yes to table the minutes. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mrs. Kalapanowicz.
Yes.
Motion to table the minutes has passed.
Thank you. Okay, so we will go to...
May I, madam, if I may?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio, please, if you could send an email with your specific question, we could then address it before presentation at the next meeting.
And I appreciate that, and I've said this before, I have time constraints as well, I do have a full-time job, and sometimes I can only get to, you know, I take hours and hours to read all of this stuff, and I do work on weekends, so it's difficult for me to sometimes get it. I spent most of my day today getting caught up with all of the paperwork, and I actually do read all this paperwork, so I apologize if it's untimely for your schedule, sir, but this is a public forum, so...
I just want to facilitate the board and investigate and find whatever information's available for your inquiry.
I have a question.
Is it on regard to the minutes?
Yes, well, regarding to what we were talking about, because you opened up by, you opened up by saying that somebody was going to ask you to resign.
Mr. Russo, we're on...
I know, but you...
We are on approval of minutes, and that's where we are right now.
I know that, but you took a lot of time...
We're staying at the approval of minutes, now we're going to number six presentations.
So you don't want to elaborate on that?
Not at this point. We're going to the agenda.
But you took the board's time to give a lengthy description of all your accomplishments.
Mr. Russo, you're out of order. If you'd like to say something, you can do it under other board business. So at this time, we're going to the presentations.
So you don't want to elaborate? We don't know if that's even true.
Do you want to introduce them and why we're doing this and the principle of the school?
So this year, we are, the MTEA has again offered their pride grants to some of our, to all of our schools, so we'll be sharing some of the highlights of things that are happening in our school. And the first month, this month in October, we are celebrating Oak Tree School's 10th So they had a wonderful week of celebration last week. Mr. Goodall, Ms. Kalapanowicz, and I actually attended one of their assemblies that happened. Students and teachers were involved the entire week in different activities, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Dinsmore.[1006.23][1006.23](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay.
A little closer.
Good evening. I am Patty Dinsmore, the proud principal of Oak Tree School. In September...
A little lower. Thank you. Better? Mr. Gorski, please. It's okay, you don't have to keep reacting.
Ms. Arminio, you can address me, and we'll fix it.
In September 2008, Oak Tree opened its doors to 662 students in grades pre-K through six, under the supervision of Mr. Dennis Ventrilo. Through the years, many changes occurred, including growing student and staff population and grade configuration. Ten years later, our doors opened to over 700 students in grades pre-K to three, and we are very excited to be celebrating our 10th birthday. Our birthday steering committee comprised of Cassie Shea, Stephanie Zicori, Denise Casili, Amanda McGarry, Nancy Hanlon, Ashley Pepe, Amanda Lee Fretz, and Kim Sinarsky, and some other very talented volunteers, have been working tirelessly to decorate the school with balloons created by our families, birthday gifts with the staff's 10-year-old photos on them, and glass cases filled with memorabilia that showcase Oak Tree through the years. Tonight, we are going to show you a little of what occurred during our birthday week, which was last week. Many thanks to Boris and his film crew, who came every single day for creating and creating a wonderful keepsake video, which you'll be able to see tonight. Also, special thanks to our PTA for providing a rock and assembly last Friday, and many, many thanks to the MTEA for assisting with the funding of the project called Oak Tree Rocks. We will end our presentation with a rendition of the birthday song performed by some of our students, and as you can see, we have a beautiful birthday cake, sorry, it's not real, that was created by our art teacher. At this time, kindergarten teacher Cassie Shea will share what some of the festivities
Our birthday committee worked hard to create a week of multidisciplinary activities that could be implemented across all our grade levels, pre-K to third. On the Tuesday of our week, students were given blank birthday crowns to decorate and wear throughout the school day. On Wednesday, students were asked to create a birthday cake for the school, and using STEM procedures, students worked collaboratively to plan their design. They used materials such as straws, plates, cups, and paper towel rolls to make their cake, and using differentiated templates, students reflected upon their work and their team interactions. Throughout the week, students painted rocks to go along with our Oak Tree Rocks theme. The rocks were generously donated by teacher Carmela Adeavia's family's nursery. The students painted the rocks with vibrant colors and designs, and the rocks are going to be on display in the foyer of our school for years to come. On Thursday, we had our Dress Like a Rock Star Day, and staff and students came in dressed like the rock stars that they are, in leather jackets, jewelry, sunglasses, and a lot more. They were adorable. Friday was our culminating event with a wonderful rock music technology assembly presented by Brent Daniels. Brent is a sound designer and producer who composed movie trailers for Black Panther and A Wrinkle in Time, as well as many more movies. He demonstrated how sound can be recorded and combined to make music. He asked for student volunteers to record their voices, and he created songs right on the spot. The students laughed, danced, and smiled the entire time. Students wore their Oak Tree Rocks birthday shirts and dressed in their birthday best for the assembly. There are several birthday displays in place throughout the school. One is a pictorial timeline of the construction of Oak Tree School, from groundbreaking to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, which Mr. Gorski said he remembered today. Another is a photo display of teachers when they were 10 years old, and the students are enjoying guessing who's who. The celebration will continue with events throughout this school year, so stay tuned for our time capsule ceremony, which will take place in the spring. Through the years, Oak Tree continues to grow and change, but one thing that remains the same is that we always strive to provide our students with rich learning opportunities and unique experiences, just like our celebration week for our 10th birthday. We are so grateful to the Monroe Township Education Association for their donation and for the FAST grant. We're thankful for Ms. Corinne Masters and the Oak Tree PTA for making these events possible. The activity celebrated a wonderful school, dedicated administrators, innovating teachers, and a beautiful community of students and parents. Thank you so much.[1281.04][1281.04](APPLAUSE).
Mrs. Dinsmore, you want the video to run?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Start. Thank you.[1306.91][1306.91](MUSIC PLAYING).
(APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING). (APPLAUSE). (MUSIC PLAYING).[1409.91]
At this time, we're going to ask the children to come up to sing "Happy Birthday" to Oak Tree.[219.14][219.14][applause] Ready? One, two, three.
[singing] Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Oak Tree. Happy birthday to you.
All right.[227.14][227.14][applause] Great job, everybody. Thank you for listening.
Can your students turn around so that we can see them?
Sure.
We just want to wave and say thank you for coming to our Board of Education meeting and singing to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dinsmore, I had the best time at your presentation on Friday.
So did I.
And the little girl, I wish you had sound on here, the little girl who loved to eat the cookies.
That was hysterical.
She was phenomenal.
It was a great day.
It was awesome. And I do have my Oak Tree Rocks t-shirt.
Good.
And I look forward to wearing it on special occasions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to just take the cake.
Okay. Okay, well, you do that, and we'll go on to our next presentation. HIB.
Good evening, everyone. For the sake of not blocking the screen, I'll stand over here. Each year, the superintendent and central office administration is responsible for reporting out results and statistics under the HIB harassment, intimidation, and bullying law. This is done twice a year at a board meeting. So what I'm reporting out on tonight is the second half of last year. So they give you a timeline of the reporting periods, and the call that the superintendent will report to Board of Ed, all acts of harassment, intimidation, or bullying, which occurred during the previous reporting period, and we're currently reporting out on Period Two for school year 2017-18. And of course, the superintendent also reports out to the Board in closed session on those HIB incidents. For the sake of time, I won't read every definition, but if you just take a moment, the HIB definition that we fall under, making sure that everyone's safe and secure here, just take a moment to glance at those. I think everyone could see them at either screen. And most importantly, when looking at all these definitions, we just want to, again, have a safe environment for all of our students in that they could go to class and feel safe, feel safe in their activities, feel safe in athletics, feel safe in cafeterias, hallways, and buses. We have very highly-trained HIB specialists at each school. They go through yearly professional development, and they also do a wonderful job of providing professional development to our teachers and staff to recognize when HIB events might be happening in the classroom, in the hallways, or in the gymnasium cafeteria. These people on the screen do just a wonderful job, making sure, again, that our kids feel comfortable. And they run so many programs and do so many interventions, even before the HIB actually takes place, to prevent things. So my hat's off to these staff members. So in Period Two last year, we had 23 reports of potential HIB. 12 were founded, nine were unfounded, and two were inconclusive. There was some evidence that the HIB might have occurred, but not enough to substantiate it. Per school, these were the confirmed HIB incidents, as reported by the superintendent to the Board in closed session for Period Two of last year, with a grand total of 23 founded HIB cases. The nature of HIB based on protected categories and distinguishing characteristics, so you see at each school how some of these HIBs were classified as part of the HIB report. In terms of ethnicity, victims of HIB are characterized in this chart here: black, white, non-specific, Asian, Hispanic, Latina. And again, this is for Period Two of school year 1718. This is a chart, I hope everyone could see it. The bullying specialists do a self-assessment at the end of the year, and the maximum score you can get is a 78. The district score was a 74, and I know the specialists are very hard on themselves in making and ensuring that the staff is trained, that they follow all of the things they're supposed to follow as HIB specialists, and they really do a true and genuine assessment of how they carry out the HIB law in our schools. So here's our district grade report, and the grade report is actually, because the report is not out yet for 1718, this was the final report for 1617. Discipline and remediation, obviously. The bullying specialists and the administration of each schools do interventions and perhaps hand out discipline based on the appropriate age and grade level of that student. There's different levels of remediation that happens within counseling and a social group, within the classroom with guided lessons from teachers, vetting character education in what we do. We have so many school assemblies at each level promoting equity and fairness to each other. And at times, when situations go too far, sometimes law enforcement is involved, but also law enforcement serves as, they do programs in schools to promote safety and security of students, too. And these are finally some of the HIB programs that we've had over the past few years. I know I've been very impressed over the past few years with a lot of the character education that goes on. I participated in the High School Challenge Day. The staff does so many programs on conflict resolution, and we have all different trainings for staff and support staff, so they're aware of how to help kids who are experiencing difficulty in schools. And that is it for Period Two. Madam President?
Will this be going on the district website?
We will post it to the website.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Godal from the board members? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our student board members' report. It looks like it's just you today.
Yeah, just me today. Okay, so I'm just going to start with the elementary schools first. Mill Lake is actually holding a fire prevention day on October 18th and 19th, and representatives from the local fire department will meet every class, and they'll talk about various fire safety programs, and they can even participate in the fire safety poster contest. And the winners are awarded gift certificates and entered in the county contest. The PTA is also organizing a trunk retreat for the students of Oak Tree and Barclay Brook on October 19th. Kids just get to go around the parking lot, collect candy from trunks in a safe school environment, which is pretty cool. As for the high school, the college fair was on October 4th. Students got the chance to learn about schools they potentially want to go to and talk to representatives, some face-to-face action. Justin Center Representative on October 10th talked about the class of 2021, about class rings on the jewelry, and those orders are being taken right about now. MTHS Deca is holding their 15th Annual Truck, Car, and Motorcycle Show on Sunday at the high school to benefit Alex's lemonade stand. The show is free for all spectators, and anyone is welcome to visit. Next week, the PSAT will be administered to sophomores and juniors during the school day, and there's a chance to win the National Merit Scholarship. FBLA will be hosting the Haunted High School that evening, too. Several clubs will be setting up Halloween-themed stations and activities for kids to enjoy, while they kind of collect candy, similar to the trunk retreat. And all the proceeds will go to the Mama Mayor Breast Cancer Foundation, which is a partner of FBLA. And finally, from October 25th to 27th, there's the 2018 Showcase by the Footlights Club. It's just an evening of songs, plays, and musical scenes for anyone to come to. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, this time we'll go to committee reports. Are there any committees that need to report this evening? Mr. Mayo?
The curriculum committee met tonight. We reviewed one curriculum document, AP Computer Science. This class discovers or investigates the fundamentals of computing, including problem-solving, working with data, understanding the Internet, cybersecurity, and programming. It broadens the students' understandings of computer science for use in a diversity of majors and careers. There are two projects during the course and one end-of-year exam. This is the second AP Computer Science course in our program of studies. We have over 80 students in three sections, and it covers a wide variety of topics, from computers to algorithms. Also, how computers function in terms of binary numbers, efficiency. It also branches into real-world issues such as hacking, phishing, cybersecurity. And additionally, students learn how to create audio, image, and video artifacts for their work. We had three other agenda items. We had a club overview, which looked at our clubs. We have approximately 62 clubs. In order to start a new club, it must be initiated by the students. They need to find an advisor. They need a student interest sheet, and then it gets reviewed by administration to make sure there's no overlap with other clubs and there's sufficient interest. If you're interested in looking at the clubs and the club offering that we have, if you go to the main page of Monroe Township High School, up on the top bar, it says "Clubs", and you can pull that down, and it gives you a calendar and the requirements for starting a club. We also reviewed the clubs. We looked at, you know, every year the clubs get reviewed: how many students are involved in clubs, how many meetings they have, how many kids show up at every meetings. There was also a survey given. At least 58% of our high school kids are in at least one club. 81% of the students involved in clubs were involved in charitable organizations. We are looking to field a second robotics competition team, because we had such a strong interest in the first robotics competition team. Students feel strong social connections from the clubs, and they also have stronger teacher interactions from the clubs. The next thing we looked at and reviewed was senior option. Senior option is the ability for students in senior year to go out and work within the community. They can do external internships, school-based internships, work studies, community service. They can obtain college credit, and they can be involved in mentorship and tutoring programs. We also looked at, we have the ability to, a new opportunity came up for us, for professional certifications within the STEM and Engineering Project Lead the Way curriculum. The Department for the Applied Arts and Careers Technology is proud to announce that in the beginning of the spring of 2019, we will be offering students professional certification exams for Autodesk Inventor and Autodesk Rivet. These certifications will follow students through college and their journey into the professional arena. They are driven by Project Lead the Way curriculum for Introduction into Engineering Design and Civil Engineering and Architecture. These exams are optional, and all students enrolled in the high school STEM Engineering Academy or Engineering Course Sequence are eligible to take these and get their certification.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mayo? Mr. Ryback?
I don't have a question. I really just have to make a comment. I'd like to compliment you, Dr. Alvik, and all the members of the curriculum committee, because that's what I want to see brought out at these meetings. I think that we need more of it. I think the public needs to see it, and I'd ask, if possible, we could have maybe demonstrations so the entire board and the public can see some of the exemplary programs that you're initiating in these schools.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. Anyone else? A question for Mr. Mayo? Are there any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none.
I was waiting to see if anybody else, but Finance.
Mr. Retske, of course.
I always like to go last. I thought for sure there would be others, but Finance Committee. So we were notified that the State of New Jersey Nutrition Program will be coming to the school, and we will be subject to a school nutrition program audit for the 2017-2018 school year. Ironically, while nutrition is in the title of this audit, it does not involve nutrition whatsoever. So they don't audit what we serve, they just simply audit, and I take "simply" back. They do audit our procurement documentation, our assessment of compliance to ensure competitive procurement of goods and services, awarded contracts, and contractor performance. So that's a state audit of our nutrition program. Excuse me. The New Jersey CUSAC review is also going to start taking place. This is a full documentation audit of our district. It covers five key areas of operation, including instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. These areas include a lot of subcategories underneath them, which will all require written documentation to prove that the district is in compliance. All the paperwork will then be scanned and uploaded into the New Jersey Home Room, and an auditor from the state will come in and visit the district to inspect. Dr. Alvik, thank you very much, has taken leadership in assigning specific areas to key personnel for the compilation of these said materials. So that's the New Jersey CUSAC audit. Then there's the CAFR audit, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Audit, that we're in the middle of, and so our notice from our auditing company, Mr. Stankowitz, has indicated that we're through the majority of our audit services. They've been completed, so we're closer and closer to finishing our audit, which we'll report back when it's done, of course. And last but not least, speaking of the auditing, Mr. Gorski and his office did put together an RFP, a Request for Proposal, for auditing services going forward as it was resolved by the board. This has gone through legal review, insurance review, and contributions from Staff Incorporated all into the RFP. For reference purposes, an RFP is similar to a bid, except that in addition to price, in this case, professional fees, there are many qualitative areas considered. We also drafted the RFP, and an advertisement will be made on October 27th out to, in local newspapers and various ways. And then companies have until November 27th to submit back to us if they want to participate and be considered in the RFP. That ends my report.
Questions for Mr. Retske?
No, I have a BGNT.
Oh, you have a report, okay.
Now he has.
Is there any questions for Mr. Retske? No questions.
He did such a great job.
Yeah. Mr. Ryback?
Okay, with Mr. Cheerle's permission, I'll review the minutes of BGNT. Monroe Township Baseball Association requests for Oak Tree Field. Representatives of the MTBA provided a handout with detailed information on a baseball batting cage and scoreboard that their organization would like to donate and have installed at Oak Tree School at no cost to the district. The equipment would be used by MTBA, but also would be available for use by the school and district teams. The committee endorsed accepting the donations and asked that they work closely with the administration on undertaking the installations and be reminded of use of building scheduling requirements and expectations for users to respect the school boundaries, parking, and access. Next item, stadium turf field and annual engineering review of bleachers. Administration provided a copy of the Professional Engineering Structural Review of the district bleachers and indicated that they are budgeting as a capital expenditure to undertake the replacement of wood bleacher boards with aluminum bleacher boards, as noted in their report. Administration also shared photos of the stadium turf field. The field was installed in 2008 and is currently beyond its eight-year warranty. The athletic director has stressed the need to have this field replaced. As shown in handout photos, the field surface is greatly deteriorating and could soon be unsafe or problematic for further use. Administration noted that this could be added for consideration in the 2019-2020 capital expenditure. Next item is district security upgrades. Administration presented a check in the amount of $39,783.97. I think we have a copy of the check there, Mr. Gorski, for a security upgrade grant that was awarded to the district. The committee requests that these funds be utilized to explore design and engineering options for adding controlled access festivales at those schools, not having these items, and looked into potential upgrades for the lobby guard visitor access program and security cameras. Church Road Wetlands LOI. Since this item was last reported at the June BGNT meeting, the district received from New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection the freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation, that's the LOI, and the wood turtle habitat assessment and site special survey for the site. As has been anticipated, the buildable area of the 65-acre site has been reduced drastically due to wetland delineation. Therefore, the committee recommends that no further action be taken for vetting the site and no additional monies be spent in this regard. Brookside HVAC project update. Administration noted that all the rooftop equipment has been delivered and set with a crane on Monday, October 8th, and that the contractor will be working in the coming weeks to finish up final connections and startup of the new HVAC system and equipment. The last item, Forsgate Drive and Oak Hill Drive bus stop committee review. Administration and committee discussed existing conditions and requested modifications to the current route. The topic was open for public discussion, with handouts provided by residents and lengthy discussion ensued. The committee requested that administration further explore this matter and visit the site to witness bus turnaround in the cul-de-sac before further action is decided. Thank you.
So any questions for Mr. Ryback? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, going back to the 65 acres, when you say there's no further action, is the township still going to deed that property over to the district, to the Board of Education?
I think that we said that we're not going to be interested, if I'm right, in getting that land, because...
Does that require a vote? Because we've accepted it through resolution, does it require a vote to reject it, then?
I don't believe that we accepted it through resolution, because they have not gotten the land yet from the builder. So they have therefore not turned it over to us.
So it's nearly two and a half years that we've been saying how wonderful it was, it was the best option, it was going to be ours, and all this stuff, and now it's nothing, and we spent over $60,000, I believe. Over the objections of, and I know I voted to spend that money, but I know I had some reservations back two and a half years ago because of that. What I don't understand is if the LOI, which is the letter of interpretation of the wetlands, why we did not know that from the builder's LOI, I believe that the builders, and why that research wasn't done prior to us spending all that money, because we were assured that it was going to be a wonderful thing. So my point is, we were, it was a big... New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection the freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation, that's the LOI, and the wood turtle habitat assessment and site special survey for the site. As has been anticipated, the buildable area of the 65-acre site has been reduced drastically due to wetland delineation. Therefore, the committee recommends that no further action be taken for vetting the site and no additional monies be spent in this regard. Brookside HVAC Project Update. Administration noted that all the rooftop equipment has been delivered and set with a crane on Monday, October 8th, and that the contractor will be working in the coming weeks to finish up final connections and startup of the new HVAC system and equipment. The last item, Forsgate Drive and Oak Hill Drive Bus Stop Committee Review. Administration and committee discussed existing conditions and requested modifications to the current route. The topic was open for public discussion, with handouts provided by residents and lengthy discussion ensued. The committee requested that administration further explore this matter and visit the site to witness bus turnaround in the cul-de-sac before further action is decided. Thank you.
So, any questions for Mr. Ryback? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, going back to the 65 acres, when you say there's no further action, is the township still going to deed that property over to the district, to the Board of Education?
I think that we said that we're not going to be interested, if I'm right, in getting that land, because...
Does that require a vote? Because we've accepted it through resolution, does it require a vote to reject it, then?
I don't believe that we accepted it through resolution, because they have not gotten the land yet from the builder. So, they have therefore not turned it over to us.
So, it's nearly two and a half years that we've been saying how wonderful it was. It was the best option. It was going to be ours and all this stuff. And now, it's nothing, and we spent over $60,000, I believe. Over the objections of, and I know I voted to spend that money, but I know I had some reservations back two and a half years ago because of that. What I don't understand is if the LOI, which is the letter of interpretation of the wetlands, why we did not know that from the builder's LOI, I believe that the builders, and why that research wasn't done prior to us spending all that money, because we were assured that it was going to be a wonderful thing. So, my point is, we were, it was a big, public, I guess...
Discussion?
Well, no, it was more than a public discussion. A lot of people took credit of how wonderful that this land was going to be for us, and we were persuaded to spend a lot of money going in, and now we have nothing. So, you know, I know we've, over the years, the public has come to here and say, well, you know, what are our plans? What are we doing? And we assured them all these times that all these things were so wonderful, and we still have no land yet. So, I just don't know how it got that far, how we spent that much money.
If I can, I just, for my own, because I know we were all involved in that. We're all interested in it. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted independent companies looking at the land, because we just wanted to make sure that we were doing it right and getting all the right information.
Well, was the information that we received from the township incorrect? Because I know we were, we had people from the administration going in and looking at the file, the planning and zoning file. So, my point, I mean, it's over now. I feel bad now that I voted for the spending of that money, and we come up empty-handed once again.
Well, like you said, we didn't know. And we were trying to do, we were trying to do the best thing at the time.
Well, we had numerous discussions, and again, we were persuaded that it was everything we should.
I'd say that all of us were well-intentioned there, even though, you know, good or bad, we were all well-intentioned, and I guess we have to take it with that, live and learn.
Well, I hope next time we're more judicious about...
That's a good idea.
And we still have to do our due diligence with looking at any piece of property that we would either buy or get through a referendum or get through a donation. But as we went along with this one, we found that the footprint for a school kept shrinking. We could still build a school, but with all the money, it would go for the infrastructure for roads and things like that, that it wasn't worth continuing to keep this land.
Right. But that's usually when we go into land, we go in blind and we just look for it. There were reports in the township, in the municipal building, that should, and I know we spent $30,000 originally, I think, to have those reports reviewed. And then, we spent another $30,000 after the encouragement by the administration. I just think we probably shouldn't have done that. And I take responsibility for that, too. Thank you.
Mrs. Lang?
I just, and this could just be a memory in my head, but I thought that the original reports from the township, everything, it looked good, but then, what, because of Superstorm Sandy and Hurricane, I was going to say Katrina, but that's not right, but the hurricane, the one that came the following year, that it changed the topography and that it made it bigger wet. So, I think that there was that, you know, this was prior to myself being on the board, but Mr. Gorski, I remember that, so please, you know.
To Mrs. Arminio and Mrs. Lang and Mr. Ryback's comments, we were in need of schools, plural, at that time.
We still are.
Let me finish. And there were no good land options. This was a offer from the township to donate the 65 acres, and the transaction was to be Toll Brothers to the township, to the Board of Education at no cost. Now, there was an original wetlands map that the Board looked at, and the architect also looked at. And at the preliminary inspection, it appeared feasible that there could be two schools constructed on that property. However, by the very nature of wetlands, they move, they transition, they relocate themselves, they grow at times, and I'm by no means an expert on this. But when we had the further wetlands study done, as Mrs. Koloponowich said, it kept shrinking and shrinking the footprint for the available school. Plus, you have to reserve space for the endangered turtles, which further shrunk the property. And there were some other liabilities with the property, which we discussed from the beginning, but they were not deal breakers, including the utility hookups and the roads, which may have needed widening, and some other issues. At this juncture, with the information we have at current, it was administration's recommendation to abandon that project, and since then, we do have a better option.
Well, I'm wondering if, may I?
Yes.
That if it's just a matter of wetlands, why can't we still accept it from the township as fields for the future? I mean, we may be able to use it just for sports or something like that, or, I mean, if it's going to be free land, as you point out, let's take it and just use it as passive recreation? We could, if the gift is still on the table from the township.
Madam, it is my understanding that there could be a liability to the district at some point because of the nature of the wetlands also. And the committee, the Building Grounds Transportation Committee, reviewed this, asked questions, and determined that it was not worth future consideration.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, thank you. I think that going forward, when we look at these kind of parcels and gifts, that what we should do is also do a legal, get a legal ruling, and do our due diligence around the legal aspects of acquiring this land. And I'll tell you why. Because from what I understand, and I've been saying this now since before I was on the Board, when this land deal came up, is that when you have cluster zoning, which is what happened over there in Colts Run, you had cluster zoning, that the benefit of the cluster zoning is that to the developers, that they get to build houses on smaller pieces of property. And then, the residual effect of that is that they give, they give open space land, they donate open space land to the town. So, in Monroe, in the past, like on the land at Oak Tree, we use that land, the open space, to build a school. It went unchallenged. And so, we were able to do that. No one challenged it. But if someone had challenged this, and there was a challenge in the works, because we had residents from there, and from what I understand, Toll Brothers was also talking about joining any theoretical lawsuit, any potential lawsuit, in favor of the residents, because they told them in perpetuity that that land would be open space and there wouldn't be anything there. So, my understanding is that open space, that our laws, Monroe laws, are preempted by state law. And in state law, that open space has to be used as open space when the cluster zoning provision is activated. So, when we do that, we would be putting ourselves on the wrong side of the law. We probably would have lost that lawsuit. It's my understanding that that's really why we walked away from this deal. So, I think that, I think that that's one of the things that, you know, going forward in the future, we need to look at the legal aspects of this stuff, so that we don't have to spend money, look at things, and then come back and say, you know, we had turtles mating over there, so we're walking away. It was probably more due to the lawsuit, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. So, at this time, we will go to public forum, because I don't think there's any committee reports left. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our four-minute timeline, time limit.
Is this agenda items only?
Agenda items only.
Yeah. Prakash Purap, 33 Denard Drive.
Could you please raise the microphone?
Yes. Prakash Purap, 33 Denard Drive. I understand the minutes of the meeting are in the agenda. The August minutes, if I remember the August meeting, there are three-hour discussion or two-hour discussion, because the wrong document was circulated to the committee, and the investigation was supposed to be done by Mr. Goodall. So, that has been captured in that?
This is, Ms. Arminio brought up closed session minutes, not the regular minutes of a regular meeting.
Anyway, whatever, wherever it is, as long as it is captured, I'm fine. Okay? So, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak to the agenda?
I'm Ira Nelson, 87 Crescent Way. My question is this. I believe there are approximately 100 school districts which are suing the State Department of Education pertaining to the flawed state aid formula. Is there a reason that this district doesn't seem to be joining in? I know I've asked this question before, and it just seems remarkable with all the overcrowding going on in the schools, and the fact that every student is supposed to receive a thorough and efficient education, that I don't know how that could actually be happening with the overcrowding being what it is. Why aren't we involved in this lawsuit with our fellow districts?
Some districts have certain criteria that they need in order, or that they have in order to file a lawsuit. If we don't fit that criteria, then we cannot be part of that lawsuit. There are now other districts who are suing because their funding has been cut, and they're not happy with that. So, they're looking to sue the state because they, some of them, we were told the other day, one town lost 1,600 students, still getting the same amount of support from the state, and they should be, it should be equivalent to the child. So, where they're getting the same amount of funding for having 1,600 students less, we're not, we're getting the same amount of funding for 1,600 students more. At this point, we have not fit any criteria to sue the state, because they feel we're getting or giving our students a thorough and efficient education.
Do you feel that way? Can't we make our own criteria? Isn't overcrowding itself a problem, an issue? Can a student actually receive the kind of education they should? When I just heard today, one of the students has to sit on a floor? I don't understand it. I just cannot understand it. I am not an attorney, but common sense tells me that there's something wrong. And you refuse to join in with hundreds, I believe it's approximately 100 school districts. Each one probably has their own criteria. Well, we certainly have superb criteria with the overcrowding situation, which is only going to get worse. We all acknowledge that. What is the plan?
One of our district goals this year is to explore options for us to address fairness and equitable school funding and aid. I'm not sure if, at this time, after the S2 legislation, if it's appropriate for us to sue, since we got money in trying to find criteria of schools. I don't know if we'll find anyone who will be suing the state because they received additional aid. But it's certainly something that we can discuss.
The aid you received, correct me if I'm wrong, is a mere fraction of what you basically need.
Right.
You're not close. Two million dollars or so that you received, and our state legislators taking victory laps at the high school isn't going to cut it. This isn't a victory.
I can speak to that a little bit more in my superintendent's report, what happened there, but we certainly are taking the approach that lobbying and speaking to our legislative officials, elected legislative officials, is a strong approach in continuing to secure more aid for us.
You're being irresponsible, that's all I can say. You're being very irresponsible, and very little will happen, as we've dealt with over the last several years dealing with this.
Thank you.
If this is your approach, you're on the wrong track.
Thank you.
Rupa Segal, 12 Mitchell Drive. I just want to thank Mr. Kolella for a very thorough and informative presentation on the high school clubs. It was really nice to learn about all the opportunities that we have for the high school students after school in the clubs. Another question I had was, in reference to the referendum, has a communication plan been developed? And if so, when will presentations begin for the community?
We're in the process of coming together and coming up with a plan on how to sell the referendum. We found out last year that it was better to wait until after the holidays than before the holidays. So, the staring committee will be meeting and discussing. That will be part of the discussion, as how are we going to handle this? What is going to be our plan? What media we're going to use to get out the word? And as soon as we come up, every time, every step that we take, we will be notifying the public.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I had a question with what Mr. Ryback was saying. I guess that was maybe the Buildings and Grounds Committee report, is that what you were giving?
That is correct.
I couldn't hear in the back. What are we doing with, what is the agreement with MTBA? Was that something that was passed this evening?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Ryback?
Yeah, the baseball, okay.
Mr. Ryback?
I couldn't hear it then. The representatives of the MTBA provided a handout, detailed information on baseball batting cage and scoreboard, their organization, and would like to donate and have installed at Oak Tree School at no cost to the district. The district would be used by MTBA, but also would be available for use by the school and district teams. The committee endorsed accepting the donations and asked that they work closely with administration on undertaking the installations, and be reminded of use of building scheduling requirements and expectations for users to respect the school boundaries, parking, and access.
Okay. Was that approved? Is that approved, or is that something that's going to be voted on tonight?
No, we don't need to vote on that. We, the committee agreed to accept all, they're going to do everything for nothing. So, the committee agreed to let them start the work, so that the baseball fields will be in the good condition that they need to be, playing and have extra parking and extra bleachers for the public.
Okay. I know about five, six years ago, that was an initiative under something called Field of Dreams that didn't, the Board didn't allow. I'm just, is that going to be the teams, through Monroe Township Rec would be able to use those fields now?
And school, school will have the first use of our fields, and the rec department will have the second use of our fields.
And would they be class one users or class two users?
The rec department, I believe they're class one users.
Yes, ma'am.
So, would you be allowing other sports, like the soccer club, to use the soccer fields at the high school?
I...
Because I know, I know they have problem with lighting sometimes, and they don't have lights, or they had to raise money to bring in lights. So, I'm just wondering, would all of the rec sports now be allowed to use our fields, such as soccer? Would they be allowed to use the soccer fields at the high school?
We have a really good relationship with the rec department, and if they need our facilities, they go through building use, just like anybody else would. If they're available for them to use, they are welcome to use it.
Okay.
And that goes to any of the fields, whether it's soccer, baseball, football, whatever, indoor.
Rec football could use the high school football field if they put in for it?
Well, they don't. They usually have their own.
But could they? Is that allowed if they wanted to? Would that be approved?
If we had a, if they've had a building use and it was available, but usually...
It would be approved.
It conflicts. But they're also allowed to use our gymnasiums and indoor facilities.
Okay. And is there a blueprint for, you said they're going to expand the parking lot at Oak Tree?
They're talking about expanding the parking lot, because a lot of the area where you park now, there's a long walk to get to the bleachers on the other side of Oak Tree. So, I don't know if they can do it this year, but they're looking, within the next couple of years, to expand the parking lot, so that you could park right where you're going to be sitting.
Just for a point of clarity, at the end of the presentation was a request to work with the Board of Education to assist in allowing better access to the fields, perhaps working on getting pathways from the parking lots for some of our more senior grandparents who want to watch games. We've all been at fields, and sometimes you have to walk over mountains to get to the field from the parking lot. So, that was the request from the association, to work with the Board of Ed somehow to allow for better access of their members.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ramraghna, 600 Strive, Monroe. Lot of questions. I know I just have four minutes. So, regarding the report on the 65 acres of land, right, so, many of the, in the public were here as part of those meetings and discussions. We voiced concerns on that, you know, it's a shame, right? We lost, I don't know, eight months, a year of time in building the schools. We lost $60,000 in those studies. And I'm appalled that both the president, as well as the BOE, is willing to let it slide except for one dissent or one concern raised, that even without a probe, shouldn't you be asking? You know, if it was corporate America, people would have lost their jobs on this, right? So we need to be running this as if we run this business. It cannot be where no one is impacted. So Madam President, I'd like to hear your feedback on my comment.
If it was this piece of land or another piece of land, we would have had to do our due diligence in making sure that that piece of land was appropriate to build a school on. So, you know, sometimes you could build a school on a small piece of property. This property was not viable to build. The longer we waited, the longer we found out that with the wetlands, that it was impossible to do that. We have a piece of property going across the street from the township that we need to use for our bus depot. We have to do the same thing. We have to do our due diligence and work with different organizations to see that that's appropriate to build a, a, a bus depot on. If we get another piece of land, we're still going to have to do our due diligence in making sure that there's no, let's say, you have an apple orchard or it used to be an apple orchard, that there's nothing in the contaminated soil that would prevent us from using a, a, the piece of land for a school. This all takes a little bit of time.
No, I understand. I don't want to interrupt you. I just want conscious of my time. It's, I understand, this is due diligence. Everyone has to do it, but there's a huge price that has now been paid. Someone was, slept on the sweatshirt, right? We have lost time, money, and effort on this. And I just, I'm just bothered that this has just been gone, next agenda item, right? And we don't even want to do anything with that 65 because I would go and park the buses there on that 65 acre lot. And think about it, the planning board or the zoning board who rezoned it as clustering, why did they rezone it? I mean, the builder could have built anything. Homes are fine, but schools, it's a problem, right? Suddenly all these birds come in and the land is drying up. And look at all this theatrics, right? I mean, just think about it, common sense, what's happening here? I'm very appalled. The second thing is the, the, on the book clubs, right, in the school, I'm sorry, I'm jumping topic because of the time. It was great to hear the report from Dawn on the book clubs and, on the, sorry, on the clubs, after school clubs. But the feedback or some of the firsthand feedback I've gotten, at least from the middle schoolers, I don't know, she mentioned about some report or survey on those clubs. It'd be good for us to see that information unless it has been shared and I missed it, it'd be good to get that. But from what I've received is sometimes sits, kids are just sitting there watching videos and movies, you know, where there's nothing going on. It's more like a glorified daycare that's happening after school. So, so I just would make sure before you add more clubs or after school activities, make sure, one, there are competent teachers that are brought in. And second, let's look at the data and get the feedback from the students and the parents.
And that's exactly what we do every year. We, we go from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, see what clubs are working, see what clubs are not working, see where there's participation, see where there's none. I know last year we got rid of a few clubs that had no participation or didn't meet. So we, we do that every year. We do an analysis of our clubs and, and after school activities.
Okay, thank you. Let's make sure it's, it is quantitative, not qualitative, those surveys and the feedback. And please share that with the public. Thank you.
And, and you can find a list of the clubs on the website under the high school. If you go to the high school part of the website, they have an area for clubs so you can know what clubs are there, when they meet, and, and information like that.
Okay, thank you.
Roger Maney, 22 Harrigan Avenue. I keep hearing that you guys are working on a new referendum, a new referendum, yet the golf course at the township took eminent domain is going in front of a three judge panel with no set court date. If the township doesn't prove its burden that this was the only land out of the 18 other pieces of property that they looked at in their study, this whole thing could revert back to the owner. And we've been told for a year and a half now by our business administrator at the town council, how amicable the owner is. If the owner was that amicable, this would be done already. You know, who's lying here?
Madam?
Yes.
How, how do you work on something when we, we don't even have it? It was like being asked to vote on a referendum when we didn't have all the, all the figures and all the facts. How are you working on this?
Mr. Maney, would you like an explanation?
Yes.
It's my understanding from the township that there is an agreement between the former owner and the township to transfer the land via eminent domain. And the only thing that remains is the determination of price to, to protect the taxpayers' interest in buying it at the best price. That's what the court is determining now.
Well, I was told a week and a half ago at the business, at the township council meeting, that the land is going, that this whole issue is going in front of a three judge panel, that the owner of the driving range is not in agreement with the township. And the township now has to meet the burden of proving that this was the only available land that they could build on. So who's lying?
What we were told is that the township owns the land and at any time that the board requests that land, we could get that land through a resolution from the township and acceptance from the Board of Education. The only thing that we know is that the cost of the land is between the former owners and the, the township. And that is in, that's what is in court, the cost of the land, not the land itself.
You guys are working with blinders on. Because if this land reverts back to the owner, you guys have put a lot of work in for nothing.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi there. Deborah Palala, 15 Louise Lane. I just wanted to reiterate what earlier the other gentleman over there had said about the question regarding suing. I understand, Mr. Goodall, you had said about taking our time and, and being patient, let's say, with the, I'll call it the, the government. My child, my oldest is in eighth grade and as far as I know, if I could recall correctly, the first time we went down to Trenton, I believe he was in kindergarten. By the time this gets through, by the time we're done, he will be long gone, we will be long gone out of this town. My opinion is, we should sue based on the fact that each child in New Jersey is worth the same value, whether you live in Monroe Township, on Louise Lane, Monroe Township, on Machaponix, in East Brunswick, in Olbridge, in Spotswood. It doesn't matter if you are in Newark or Camden. The fact is, I believe that is enough of a reason, in the lawyers that I've spoken to, that children should be worth the same dollar amount investment from our state. In my eyes, they all should be worth the same as well. So if that's not enough of a reason, and the length of time that we've had our patience with this, it's really just trying for all of us here to continually hear that we need to wait. I was at that meeting, the first time I went, Senator Ruiz said to our face in front of Linda Greenstein, I'll say it again, she said, "Why would I give your district money? Towns in my district want money. What are you going to do for me? It is a political game of scratching their backs and what senator is going to vote for this? And what did you do in your, for, for my, for my district versus yours? I don't know how far we're going to get. We all know political red tape. This is it." And we need to think about this really much stronger than we have. Years we've been doing this. The first time I hopped on a bus to Trenton from this town was probably six or seven years ago. And that's when this, and that probably started before I was even in the school system here. So I just want to reiterate again, we can wait until, who knows how many other schools are built in this town before we're going to get any more money. The waiting game is not working in our favor. If we had anything and we said, whether it was class, if we, if we even put any sort of racial anything in any of the sentences, they would look at our suit first. This is a, a crazy amount of time that we've waited for money. And while everyone is happy that we got more, it is not enough. And that's it. Thank you.
Ambika Sukla, 2 C.R. Court. I would like to talk about a couple of things. The first thing is regarding referendum. And I have two questions. One is, how much delay we have had overall since we first realized that we need these schools to the point where we don't have anything? Is it three years, four years, five years?
When Dr. Kozak came to the district in 2000, when did he come? 14? He was tasked, that's the first thing that the board tasked him, with getting a referendum on the ballot so that we can have schools. So that took almost three years for him to do that, with working through different committees, with working with the public, with working with the staff. So that, that, that was last March.
That was following redistricting.
Do you want to speak to that?
No, and that was prior to Dr. Kozak's arrival with Mr. Ventrello, serving as interim. There was a redistricting among the elementary schools to deal with overcrowding in some of the schools. That was the first step. So I went back even further.
Well, it goes back to Dr. Hamilton, but then Dr. Hamilton left our district and...
So is that five years or is it more than five years? I'm just curious.
Probably one, two, five.
Well, the redistricting was...
So for five years, we have had, we have known that we need new schools and we don't have anything to show so far. And we don't even know if the next referendum is, we are going to win or not. We don't know if the land, if we have done due diligence on the land. For all you know, you know, after all the legal stuff is done, the due diligence will start, it'll go for a year, and then we realize, oh, you know what, there is, it's wasteland or whatever. So that could pretty much take it to seven or eight years, just to kind of get started, if at all we get started, right? Which I, I believe is a, is a big failure on the part of the town and the Board of Education. The second question I would like to ask is, how much money have we spent on the referendum in these last five to six years? In assessing land and creating these plans, you know, selling, trying to sell it to people and so on?
I, I, I don't have that cost off the pan. I don't know, Mr. Gorski, if you can say that offhand, how much we've spent?
I would hate to hazard a guess at the figure, but I will say that those are required costs for any exploration of a school project and it's consistent with other projects that we've been successful with and other school districts that have been successful with referenda. You have to do exploration work. There's a lot of work required by the Department of Education that costs money. Where you would expect to have somebody fired is if you didn't do this work upfront and you, you recommended or you began a building process on that land without doing the board's due diligence. And we would never do that.
Well, I, I, I would like to get estimate of the cost, if not today, perhaps in the next one, because I think the public needs to know how much money we have blown up on this, even though that is consistent with, you know, whatever standards that you are comparing it with. I do have a third thing, and this is not about, this is about funding, if, but I think I'm going to run out of time if I talk about it. But it's a totally different topic. Would you allow me to? I'm not going to ask you difficult questions, trust me.
Well, you have two seconds left, so you might have to wait to the next public forum.
Well, you don't want to know about something that, that I, I sent you an email a long time back, breaking, giving a detailed breakdown of funding. I did get, I got no rest...
We have to keep to the public forum time. If I give you more time, I'd have to give everybody more time. So we do have another public forum, which shouldn't be that far away in the agenda.
Well, you know, just for the record, I, I just want to mention for the record before I leave is...
I'm sorry, but your, your time is up at this point. There's still people behind you who wish to speak.
I'll take two seconds of your time.
Sir, we have, sir, we have to move on to the...
I sent you a mail about...
I'm sorry, but you...
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, great. Awesome. That's, that's, that's the reason why you just affirm what, how I feel about this management.
So, let me continue. Krishna DeKalae, 11 Jake Place. The question about fair funding we have is, if you simply change the equation, Monroe is in a special situation, right, where we have 50% of our population being senior citizens. If you, no other township in the state has this situation ahead of them. So how are we dealing with the lawmakers? I know you, there's a talk about lobbying with the lawmakers and everything so that you know the cover for this. This is, this takes a special case of the formula to get, get us additional funding. Are you, do you have any plans on solving this special situation for Monroe?
Well, we're not the only district in New Jersey that has 50% seniors. There's a lot of other districts. My parents live in a district that has 50% or more senior citizens, so it's not unusual for that to happen. There's a lot of shore districts that have that. Our, when we spoke to Senator Sweeney the other day, he knows about Monroe. He knows about the seniors. I did bring it up to him, about the inability for seniors to pay and keep paying. So it, it's not, it's not just a Monroe issue, it's, it's a fair funding issue. And the only way that that is going to change is when the funding formula changes. So we can, we can keep fighting for our fair share of funding and they will fund us our fair share, but it's not enough. What they, what we need to do is fight for a fair funding formula to be changed so that everybody in New Jersey gets funded fairly, if that makes any sense.
Right. Let me give you a simple equation, right? If you change the wealth of the seniors with the income, the fixed income that the seniors have, we would get $19 million more. We back, we reverse engineered the data that we have on the fair funding.
Well, apparently the, the state does not have the same numbers that we think that they should have. And they think we're a wealthy community. They think the seniors are wealthy and they can afford to pay for the education of our students. We know they can't. We know that we give Trenton $39 million. We get back, now we're getting back almost $5 million. So we have to change the formula because we are okay with the formula right now, but...
So you said you are okay with the formula, was that something?
No, I don't mean that I'm okay or anybody's okay. I mean that we're getting, or we will be getting, because they, they have promised us that they will fully fund our formula, but at the point, we're only going to get nine or 10 million dollars. So the, the formula needs to be changed.
So when you said nine or 10 millions, just a quick question, is it next year or the year after?
Madam?
Okay.
Madam? May I ask, may I answer the gentleman's question?
Sure.
I, I've spoken previously about the state aid issue, having been with the district for a number of years now and, and, and fighting hand in hand with a lot of residents and members of the Board of Education, current and previous. The state's criteria, according to two firms that have reviewed our situation, we, we asked expert attorneys from Walens, Goldman, and Spitzer about the viability of a lawsuit. And we asked representative from New Jersey Association of School Business Officials, Mr. John Donahue, the executive director. And we asked Mary Smith and others that I'm probably leaving off. The, the criteria for suing the state is that if you can demonstrate the current level of funding is not meeting thorough and efficient education, T and E, Monroe certainly is. As a matter of fact, we're $13 million above adequacy, so we are more than meeting the students' needs here as far as dollars in the classroom. The second is that the funding formula is being applied fairly. And in everybody's review, the funding formula as it is written is being applied fairly and consistently to Monroe. I agree completely with the board president that it is the Funding Formula, School Funding Reform Act of 2008, which is the fault here. Even at full funding, our full limit of funding will just pass $9 million. That's a disgrace. We need more money. We need a new formula. And some of the legislators who we met with were amenable to addressing it that way through a constitutional convention and a new formula. That is the only way we, in my opinion, we will receive satisfaction.
A quick question.
So your, your time is now up too.
I know.
And so we, we're going to say the same thing to you that we just said to the gentleman before you. You can come up again at the second public forum.
There's one thing I want, just wanted a clarification.
I'm sorry.
Mr. DeKalae, you're welcome to call me anytime you want to talk about that.
Andy Clory, 16 St. James Street. Three points I want to make. First is, I heard from member Jill de Mayo about the, the course that they want to add. As a civil engineer, I can tell you that it's an excellent course for AutoCAD, Microstation, and Revit. I humbly request that you also look into the BIM. It's a Building Information System, Management Systems. That's also a course that typically civil engineers use in building actual buildings. Mr. Rotsky, you talked about doing the Comprehensive Financial Review Plan. I believe it's done on an annual basis. It would be very helpful, if you may, if you could, actually do an annualized one to the... As a civil engineer, I can tell you that it's an excellent course for AutoCAD, Microstation, and RIVET. I humbly request that you also look into the BIM. It's a Building Information System, Management Systems. That's also a course that typically civil engineers use in building actual buildings. Mr. Rutske, you talked about doing the Comprehensive Financial Review Plan. I believe it's done on an annual basis. It would be very helpful, if you may, if you could, actually do an annualized one to see what the spending patterns have been, at least not at every line item, but at the bottom line of each line item, to see operating costs and things like that. Because obviously, there's tremendous amount of concern in terms of the funding for the schools. There's any opportunity for us to make some savings out of it, that would be very helpful. I looked at at least four or five reports, and the numbers seem to vary by pupils' cost year to year. So if there's some consistency, we can bring to that. So I guess, but my point is I think we've got to be efficient in our, our own doings before we ask the government. And I could tell you that having testified in front of the Assembly, that there's no way things are going to be changed in terms of funding very quickly. The minute I, we walked up, and I'm not sure who from the, from the board member spoke, but by the time I got up and spoke, the Jersey City Assembly lady who was sitting there was extremely upset that we're really annoying her, because her constituents need to get the money that they need to get. And quite honestly, the urban centers are where all the votes are, so the politicians are going to gravitate through those. It's going to be a long time. But I remember being a part of the Ad Hoc Finance Committee, that we were looking at some ways to sue the state, and one of the items that we were looking at at that point was transportation as means of using the suing, but I don't think that we pursued it any further. I'll be more than happy if the board permits the, through the committee or any committee that you may have, to work on that. The last question I have is, I understand there was a meeting that took place in the high school with the Senate President and a few other members of the Board of Education. Could you shed some light on what exactly has been discussed and what as public that we should know? Thank you.
Mr. Goodall will be bringing that up in his superintendent's report, and I will be saying something in my board president's report about that meeting on Friday.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Gautam Gaitya from 3 Miko Drive. I had a comment on the same topic.
Sir, can you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. Yes, I have a comment about fair funding. So I, along with some of my friends, we have dissected the formula. So the question to the board is how much we understand the formula, or is there a component in the formula where Monroe is getting a hit? According to the formula, Monroe is getting a fair funding, but which component is really contributing to the fact that we are not getting enough that we should be getting? Which component?
So you're asking the, the current formula and, and why Monroe is getting what it's getting if it's a fair formula?
So the formula is not fair, we all know.
Right.
So why is it, so have we approached to the, to the Trenton with?
Right, and I don't want to get into a debate back and forth with the funding formula, because I think we all agree that we're not getting what we deserve here in Monroe. And in, the formula, when they feel Monroe, because it's based on the wealth of communities, they feel that Monroe is a wealthy community, and we can pay, we can afford to pay for our own education.
So one comment I want to make on the wealth, so there is an affluent factor that Board of Education assigns to every school district. According to that, Monroe is equivalent to Old Bridge. Old Bridge is getting $25 million in aid. Monroe is getting $2 million, and it got increased to $4 million, and that's still nothing compared to North Brunswick, Old Bridge. In fact, even Hillsboro is getting, Hillsboro is, is in fact, more affluent than Monroe, according to that district factor.
I think we all agree with you.
So, so what, so as a board member, do you understand the formula?
I do not understand the formula. Mr. Gorsky might understand the formula a little better than I will.
So isn't it, I can, I can sit down. I have, I have few people who knows even more than me. We can sit down and explain to you guys.
Sir, it is a very complex formula. I'm not aware of any board member who can really speak and give a justification. I've studied this now for over a decade, and in specific to your question, an area of address with the formula is with the equalization aid. That is the largest type of aid, and that is distributed based upon a local fair share calculation. That calculation is what determines how much your district has to subsidize your own adequacy budget. And in Monroe's case, for the last 20 years or longer, we've received $0 from equalization aid, because the formula itself determines that we are not only affluent in terms of income, but affluent in terms of property ratables. Those two factors come into the local fair share calculation, and that is what should be addressed if we were to take on a new formula. We need our fair share of equalization aid that supports an adequacy budget. That's where most of the spending goes.
So, yeah, that, that exactly was our finding. The, the, the property values in Monroe are affecting the formula, and, and the fight with the Trenton should be on that particular piece of the formula.
And we have mentioned that to Trenton many times.
It's been, everybody has mentioned.
Until the, until the legislators want to create a new funding formula, we will be continuing to get.
Is there a timeframe?
No. There is no timeframe.
What are township's next steps?
Well, one of our district goals will be to continue to fight for funding formula.
Are we trying to sue the state on that?
At this time, your time is up also.
Okay, thank you.
So we will refer you to the next public forum.
I missed it. Lou Masters, Nye McKenna Court. Welcome back, Patty. Actually, that's the first thing I want to say. You're a very strong person to come back after three, right?
Thank you.
All right, get that out of the way. For what Mr. Gorsky was saying, thanks for clarifying. We are made whole via the formula, correct?
The funding formula, School Funding Reform Act of 2008, is being applied fairly and consistently in Monroe as it is written, yes.
So if we, what would we sue for then? If they're basically?
From what I've, madam?
Yes.
From what I've gathered, from the attorneys who have reviewed this, from Executive Director of New Jersey ASBO, my own assumption is that we would be a weak candidate for a lawsuit because the following reason. Many districts that are suing are showing bleeding in instructional programs and classrooms. For example, Free Hole Borough had students being educated in hallways.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's one of the reasons that the state came in and had sympathy. That sympathy is, is not going to be gained by looking at the programs in Monroe, which we are very proud of, which are $13 million above what the state considers to be adequate.
It's fine, you're killing my time. I only have four minutes. I urge the board, we do this every once in a while, we start talking about suing the state.
Oh, Mr. Masters?
Yes. We're getting tunnel vision again with this. I think the board needs to, at least in parallel, start looking at other avenues of revenue. If we get stuck on this and then we get another $100,000 or $200,000 or a million, we're going to be saying the same thing a year from now. If we don't have anything else kind of going on, we need to start cutting expenses, more shared services. We talk about that all the time, but we need to really expand on that. Economy's a scale. We're doing a lot of great things here in Monroe. We need to start doing things like that. Creative sources of revenue. We always used to say stuff about putting ads on the, that wasn't me, putting ads on the field, things like that. But we really need to start, I mean, those are just examples, but we really need to start looking at things like that, instead of just talking about suing for a couple million dollars, which is great, which we might not even get. And again, it's just working in parallel, which I urge the board to do. That was my spiel. The other thing, for curriculum, there's a, I missed it. There's another, how many APs or what were you talking about for the computer science? Because I have a STEM background.
No, we just talked about the new curriculum document for AP Computer Science Principles.
Okay. Does that have anything to do with machine learning or anything like that? Do you know off the top of your head?
I, I don't believe so, but that's only open to, isn't this for 11th and 12th graders?
So it is from, we're seniors, right?
Okay.
Because it's, from where I am, that's, that's a big, we're looking at that for people coming out of school, for kind of college. That seems to be the newest, I don't want to say the paradigm. So I think we should really start looking into stuff like that, if we can, including it in the curriculum. Anything with neural networking, all that kind of stuff, that's, that's the wave of tomorrow. That's what everybody's going to. You can look on a lot of the sites that are out there, and they talk about adding this into curriculum. So that's just my, my take on what we should be doing there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Russ Church, 15 Taylor Avenue. I'm actually from the MTBA. We met at the meeting. I just wanted to thank you guys for approving it. Just to put it out there, it's not for rec, it's not for school. We look at it as for the kids in the town, okay? And these, these upgrades will just give them a better experience for the middle school and the MTBA kids. So I just wanted to thank you, and we'll do everything the way.
Thank you. And we're, we're looking forward to working for you, because we're all here for kids.
Okay. I just want, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will close the public forum and move on with the agenda. Mrs. Lang?
Excuse me, I need to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, feel better.
Thank you.
And, and we, we so happy that you're finally back.
Thank you.
Pretty soon, you'll be back for all the meeting.
No, no. Stay in the room.
Okay, we will go to the superintendent's report. Mr. Goodall?
Thank you, Madam Board President. I just wanted to report out on a couple of items. One very special to me, what I'm passionate about as a educator and that's working with students with special needs. We are really going to try to increase our efforts to support all of our special education students and their families by working with parents of special needs children in the parent organization known as CPAG or Special Education Parent Advisory Group. The goal is to make the group more meaningful and influential in the school district in its supporting those students. We'll be meeting with a group of parents to strategize how the district can support and, most importantly, better include these children within our school culture. A general meeting of CPAG is tentatively scheduled for November 29th, but we will be sharing further details soon. On Friday, October 12th, and we had a presentation tonight, myself, Dr. Alvik, Mrs. Kalaponowicz, our board president, attended a student celebration at Oak Tree Elementary celebrating the school's 10th birthday. The students and staff enjoyed a very interactive, engaging, and informative performance by a professional sound engineer. The presenter really got the kids involved, and you saw on the video how much fun they had, and all fun was had by all, and we celebrated at Oak Tree Rocks. And I just wanted to thank Mrs. Dinsmore and her teaching staff and support staff for making it such a great celebration. And a little bit after that, after extending an open invitation during the S2 Fair Funding legislation this past summer, New Jersey Senate Majority Leader Steve Sweeney took us up on our offer and requested a roundtable discussion opportunity with some of our high school students, our PTO president, Mr. Mayor Trupel, the acting principal of the high school, central office administration, Mrs. Kalaponowicz, and Mr. Ryback. The roundtable was also, in attendance was Senator Greenstein, Assemblyman DeAngelo Benson, and Mayor Tamboro. The discussion focused on Monroe's long fight for fair funding and her view, and a review of how our additional aid-supported programs, including special education programs, and gave tax relief back to the community. We recognize the efforts of so many community members, past and current board members, who have lobbied for years for our fair share. Most importantly, our audience of elected officials heard loud and clear that our expectation is to continue to demand increases in additional funding that Monroe is entitled to through changing of the funding formula. We also have some personnel items to approve. So Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that Personnel Action Items A through AN under the Superintendent's Report be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Mr. Braverman moved it, second by Mr. Ryback. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Goodall?
None.
None? Okay, then we will have a roll call.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Chirillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through AN under Superintendent's Report has passed.
Thank you.
We also have some board action items. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Edit, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through S be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Moved by Mr., Mr. Braverman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryback. Again, any comments or questions? Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, on the board goals, I'm sorry, on the district goals number one, district goal number one, number six. I know we had asked for a creation of a civic education, but could you explain number six? Because it looks like it's just a online.
What page are you on?
I'm on, it's, it's R. Recommend that the board approve the previously submitted district goals.
Okay.
And on the district goals specifically, number one district goals, number six, I'll, I'll read it. Creation of district digital civic ed link to homepage, which will facilitate a hub to share content-specific research, student work, civic club happenings, collaborative leadership work with district civic ed partners and staff and students and community at large. Wow. Okay. So what is that? Please.
Yes, Dr. Alvik?
Ms. Casalotto is working to create a space on our webpage that would share out resources for civic education. This is not the course that you were, that you were referencing.
Right.
This is just another way to share out resources and to share out some of the things that we're currently doing with our students, with the community.
Okay, but I thought that when we had our meeting to discuss district goals, that it was specifically a course, a classroom instruction? So have we done any?
That doesn't need to be a district goal, because that's a state mandate. That is something that we are in, that we do have to create to begin in the 1920 school year. So that's something we are looking to do.
Okay, so where is that going to be?
And that's ongoing in development at the middle school.
It's going to be development at the middle school, and what about the high school?
We already have a civics class at the high school.
A specific class, an instructional class that kids go into the classroom and?
Yes, it's not a mandated class for graduation, but it's an elective class.
It's an elective. Okay, I think what I was trying to get at, at the, at our goal is that we, we should have a mandated class, or we should do it, like someone in the public said recently, that we should go beyond what's mandated sometimes, governance, the history of our country, and, you know, specifically, I think, a classroom. And I thought that was the intention. I thought that was what was agreed to at that meeting. So you're saying that that's, that's not happening yet?
Well, it's happening at the middle school. A lot of that is embedded in what they do in our social studies classes at the high school, but certainly, this is a work in progress, and that could be explored moving forward.
Okay, that was the answer that I got last time. I thought we were going to be more specific in this goal, so I'm disappointed that we haven't come up with classroom instruction at this point. I mean, in our, in, in, our democracy is, is a very important thing to me, and I think one of the responsibilities of a public school education is to really bring out, especially in high school, kids going in, you know, some of our high school students in their senior year could, could register to vote. I think it's really incumbent upon us to make good citizens, and I, I don't see that that we have something.
We do have them register to vote when they're a senior and they turn, don't we?
Registering to vote and knowing about governance and our history and specific.
They learn that during their high school years as part of the curriculum.
Well, there's no specific.
It's not a specific class.
Right. And, and I, that's what I'm told.
But it's embedded into the curriculum.
I know, but we don't know what's embedded. It can be embedded into literature, it can be, there's no specific govern, I, I just object to.
Keep, keep in mind, at the high school, there's a sequence and required courses to meet graduation. So just because we might want to have a mandated civics course at the high school within one year, you really couldn't do that. That would be unfair to the students as they commit. We usually pilot something and then bring it online, not on, literally online, but as part of what their sequence is to graduate as students enter the ninth grade. So developing a similar course in the middle school is probably your best first action step.
Mr. Russo?
I might be wrong, but I'm just, I think what Ms. Arminio means is that the embedded way that we currently do, do it is not working. Am I right?
Right, yeah. You can say that.
It appears not to be working.
No, I, I understand the point, but it's. I understand the point, but it's not just as simple. They're, when you get to the high school, there's sequence and a list of required courses that the kids have to take. That's why currently the civics is an elective class. So it makes sense to have a exposure class in the middle school and then potentially add a required course of civics. But you would do that with a beginning entering ninth class, and you would outline that in the program of studies. So parents and students know upfront that they need that as part of their requirement from Monroe Township to graduate.
I would just say that we are very fortunate to have engaged citizens that come to our meetings. Whether they agree with me or not, I am grateful for their presence. I am grateful for the, you know, how they show their children to be engaged. Democracy is important. It should not be an elective. We need to make responsible citizens going forward, and it shouldn't be something that's just elective. I'm disappointed in the way this was, because this is what we've been hearing for years. We keep hearing it, and I thought I was specific, and I thought there was agreement about a specific information. I'm, you know, I get flabbergasted a lot lately, but I'm flabbergasted that it's not an important enough issue.
If I misspoke in presenting the goals, I wouldn't have promised having a high school requirement for our current students within a year's time or six months' time, because I know in the past, whenever we introduced a new requirement, such as like an economics class, which was a state mandate, we did that with the entering ninth grade.
No. Fine.
Anyone else? Then we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Chierella?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
I vote yes, except for I vote no on E and no on R.
E and R, like emergency.
Got it. So noted. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes on everything, no on E, no on H.
No on E, no on H. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through S has passed.
Okay. So we go to the, I'm assuming that concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Goodall, we will go to the Business Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Mrs. Kalaponowicz, if you'd help me in doing the honors of presenting the check.
Is I taking a check? Does I like to send the check?
Play down a white for a moment. This is a check payable to the Monroe Township Board of Education for $39,783. This represents the administrative efforts to go to meetings from New Jersey School Board Insurance Group, Eric North, and apply for a grant called the Safety Grant, which we do every year through the efforts of Mr. Jerry Tagg mainly. This year, this is one of the highest amounts that I've seen, $39,783, and I believe it was discussed before what our intentions were to do with this money, but it is money much needed and will be put to good use.
Yes. Thank you.[818.56][818.56](applause)
I believe Mr. Ryback mentioned that in your report.
Yes.
Or didn't? I think so.
I saw the check.[831.12][831.12](laughing)
Also on my report, I want to draw attention to Item O, which is a resolution of the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe, authorizing certain action with respect to information received from the New Jersey Department of Education. We have received two preliminary cost letters, preliminary eligible cost letters, PEC letters, from the Department of Education pursuant to application. These letters have indicated that the Monroe Township Board of Education has a preliminary eligible cost for the Monroe Township Middle School of $75,687,000. From that, we are eligible for debt service aid of $7,516,000. And I will put all this information on the website, so don't feel the need to feverishly document everything. We have also asked cooperation from the district's financial advisor in calculating what the average annual tax impact would be on a referendum of that dollar amount. Before I get there, that dollar amount has increased from the previous referendum, which was $68,845,000, to now $75,687,000 because of two reasons. Increased construction costs, which Mr. Tagg estimates go up, estimated, goes up about a million dollars a year, but also because of engineering estimates of commodity prices, particularly steel, that is a major component of the construction, and a reserve of additional monies for the effect of tariffs and the threat of tariffs. So, you know, we had indicated previously with this referendum that unfortunately, if it was to be defeated, it was going to cost more. Unfortunately, it has. But some of the good news is that the tax impact has not gone up that substantially. For a home assessed at $100,000, the average annual impact on that new middle school project would be $48.81 per year.
Per hundred, sir?
Per $100,000 of assessed value. $48.81. The second preliminary eligible cost letter that we received is the second component of the planned bond referendum, which is the additions to the Monroe Township High School. Be reminded that this school opened to capacity and has now exceeded capacity, and we are a year later than where we were last year, where this was not part of the question. The cost for the addition to the Monroe Township High School is $71,030,000. The average annual tax impact per $100,000 of assessed value is $43.95. The resolution you have this evening as part of my report is to accept the preliminary cost letters from the Department of Education, not to challenge them, and to send a certified resolution of this action to the Department of Education. It is recommended by the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Business Administrator and Facilities Director to accept these preliminary eligible cost letters as we believe them to be fair and accurate. That said, Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through O be approved by consent roll call.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. DeMayo, Mr. Ryback, comments or questions for Mr. Gorski?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the donation of two $500 gift cards from Ocean First for Barclaybrook and Oak Tree School. I think that was very generous. And the donation for STEM-related materials for Donor Choose for Instruction at Mill Lake School, and the donation from RBC Capital Markets for Brookside School. It's $1,000 to support the Empty Bowls Project. And the donation from the MTBA for their, for the scoreboard and batting cage at Oak Tree. I think these are wonderful additions to our school, and they are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMayo. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes, thank you. That's, thank you, Mr. DeMayo, for that. I 100% agree. Thank you, everybody who is so generous to our students. On the Board Action A through N, I have a question regarding, I have a couple of questions. On number one, professional appointments, we're talking about Princeton Healthcare Systems, and it talks about onsite educational services for some of our students who are hospitalized. And Princeton Healthcare System is providing that. Are they certified teachers? It says, it says Princeton Healthcare engages certified tutors to provide onsite educational instruction. So it's their, their teachers and their tutors that go into our, to our children if they're in the hospital?
That is Mr. Goodall's understanding.
Okay. So we don't have any, so when they say certified, so they've, they've had all the background checks and all that kind of stuff that we would normally do with teachers and tutors in our district?
Yes.
Okay, so we're providing that. And just in that regard, number nine, 10, and 11, it also talks about we're hiring individual people to, it says, provide hospital education services to students admitted in different places. So that looks to me to be individual. I just like verification of that. Are they, like, for specific students, or is this, are we getting four contracts for, in general? One is Barbara Mark?
One, ten, eleven.
Like, I...
Whoa.
Yeah. And the other is Silvergate Prep, and the other's professional educational services. They seem to be not, yeah. They seem to be for specific students? I just want to know, or are they overlapping?
Madam, they are not like our time and material bids anticipatory. There is an IEP-driven need for these.
For, it seems to me, that's what I thought, nine, 10, and 11, correct? And number one is just in general?
That is my understanding by the recommendation of the Special Education...
And they do overlap.
They do overlap?
Mm-hmm.
So if we're paying, so if a child is in Princeton Healthcare System and they're getting tutors from them, they may also be getting additional teach, teachers?
From us?
No, from, from the free bottom.
Like, are two of these organizations or healthcare systems working with one child?
No.
No.
Okay. So I get it that Princeton Healthcare Systems, if we send a child there, we are agreeing that they can bring teachers in to help that child get that.
That's correct.
So that's a general contract. I thought that nine, 10, and 11 might be specific contracts. But are they open to anybody, or do we have specific children now that we're doing this? Are these like professional for like the whole year?
Madam?
That could be temporary, depending on the placement of the student.
Right.
And I couldn't answer if, right now, we have a child who's receiving that. You're approving them to actually provide the service if necessary.
Right. But I mean, if, we're not sending two, two teachers into one child if it's, you know what I'm trying to say?
Madam?
Sure, if you, do you want to take a shot?
Princeton isn't the only hospital we use if we need to send a child out for any kind of treatment. So these other placements could be in other hospitals.
No, that I get. And that was my question. What I'm saying is, there's no overlap. Nine, 10, and 11 won't be sending someone to Princeton Hospital because we're already covered under that contract.
I can't speak to that. It would depend on the student. If they have, if Princeton doesn't have someone available to work with the student, we would have to send someone in.
Well, I get that.
Yes.
As long as it's not an overlap, like we keep sending.
It wouldn't be an overlap. It would only be one.
Okay, then I also have a question on transfer number three in the bills list. And you can clarify this for me as well. We had, $140,000 was taken from the regular program instruction teacher salaries and was put in, it was divided into $20,000 for legal services and another $120,000 for general administration miscellaneous purchase services. Is that how that was broken up and transferred?
Bear with me, I'm looking for the transfer schedule.
Okay. I have it here. Transfer number three. If you'd like, I'll just pass this.
Would you mind? It'll save time.[1474.75][1474.75](laughing) This transfer number three is for the 18-19 budget, and it only has a few line items here, so I'll be happy to go through them. The first one is undistributed expenditure support services, general administration, legal services. That is getting an infusion of money for $20,000. I anticipate a question coming up, why are we transferring money in there, Mike Rick? The reason for that is, we have a number of special education lawsuits which are sent to the district's insurance carrier, subject to a deductible each time. And those cannot reasonably be estimated at the time the budget's put together. We have had numerous special education lawsuits. They have been sent to the insurance carrier. This is to replenish that account line item with additional funds to cover the deductibles. In regular programs, instructional teacher salaries, now that we have a defined agreement with the MTEA and so on, and it is, it is one of the largest line items in the budget, this is a transfer out of that account for $140,000.
Okay.
Some of the money is going into 11000230590, undistributed expenditure support services, general administration miscellaneous purchased services for $120,000. And another one for cleaning and maintenance services for $5,000, where the money's coming from custodial service salaries. Transfers are, are part of managing the budget. Inherently, when you put together a budget, it's based on estimates and projections, and this allows you the flexibility to work through that during the year. There are strict restrictions on some accounts for transfers, such as administrative accounts. And overall, you can't transfer more than 10% of an appropriation amount to or from a particular account line item.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that. I was just nervous that it was coming out of regular program instruction teacher salaries, that's all.
Any other questions? Mrs. DeMayo?
I, sorry, I just wanted to say I was remiss in not thanking Eric North for the Safety Award that we received too, so I would like to thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Chierella?
Yeah, I also have a question on transfer number three. So we're taking $140,000 out of teacher salaries out of that bucket, and we're, and we're putting $120,000 into general administration miscellaneous? What is that? What is general administration miscellaneous?
Do you want to say that again?
No, no. Although the exact expenditure escapes me, that account is for purchased services of an administrative nature. It could very much involve, in this particular case, the district environmental engineer who was engaged with the mold remediation project. But I would have to really look at that more specifically in order to give an exact answer, but that's my estimate. We have a very large budget. Teacher salary account has an appropriation amount exceeding $25 million in the aggregate, so that's a very small percentage coming out. And I wouldn't be surprised if there's more transfers either in or out throughout the year. I will say that no instructional staff have been cut or from the budget. In fact, quite the contrary, we've added positions that have not been budgeted for, for growth. And those also need to be accommodated for through transfers.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Russo?
Just on O, why do we have to accept the resolution, Mr. Russo? What's the significance of accepting it?
Because, Mr. Russo, it's required by the Department of Education to finalize the preliminary eligible cost letter into what becomes the final eligible cost letter, the FEC letter. So this is the Board Action, accepting the costs that have been compiled for these projects, and the amount of debt service aid that is estimated per the schedule so that we can proceed with the process.
So if these two projects are approved, what would be the total debt that the district would be, including the current debt?
I'm going to estimate that number. Right now, we have total debt of approximately $125 million. So that exact number will be reported shortly when we present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, but it's approximately $120 million outstanding for bonds to build schools. So you... So you would take your $120 million, and you would add to it 75 million, and then 71 million, assuming that both pieces of that referendum are successful. That would take the amount of outstanding debt to approximately 266 million, and that is within our, our current borrowing capacity.
It is. And just curious, a ballpark figure, best guess, what do you, what would that cost in terms of debt service per year?
Please rephrase your question?
What would, what would the extra borrowing cost in debt service per year? Like, now we pay, I don't know, about $10 million or $9 million per year in debt service?
That's correct. That, I, I appreciate the question. Right now, our debt service budget is about $10 million. But keep in mind, we have bonds that are maturing, we have interest and, and principal that are being satisfied, that are falling off that schedule, fortunately. So I would have to calculate that to figure out what the addition of this debt and the falloff of the existing debt would actually amount to.
Okay. I mean, considering rates are going up, borrowing another 140 or so, what would that cost?
I'm sorry, I'd have to calculate that. If you wish, I could get you that information tomorrow. I don't know offhand. That's, that's a calculation.
At 4%, it's about 6 million a year. Additional.
Any other questions for Mr. Gorski?
I, I do have one more. On N, the contractual renewal, I just actually have a comment. That is to renew our contract with GNG Technologies for our video of the meetings. My question is, I, we don't seem to be, like, the, the videos are on our website, and it seems like the public, like, if you wanted to, or I tried to, download the video just so I have a record of it. It's not possible under this technology that we have? It doesn't seem to be? Is that, it's a question. Because I, I would like to, to know that the public can download the video if they wanted to, for nothing, rather than paying a small fee for, for getting a copy of the video of the meetings.
I beg your pardon, I don't have that technical understanding, but, but if a member of the public wanted to request a copy of the meetings?
Mr. Allottic?
They could over-request it, and we would provide them with a link.
No, but they can't, they.
Can you download videos off of the website?
Yeah, you can't download it from the link, I don't think. Hi.
As a matter of fact, hi. We can make the Board of Ed videos available for download.
You can, but the public can't, right? I can't.
No, no, no. Like, it's just something that needs to be turned on. That feature wa, hasn't been requested up until, you just mentioned it now. But if the Board so desires, we can make it avail, we can make the Board of Ed video, videos available for download.
Could, does that have to be, would that have to be included in this renewal? Because then I would, I'd like to either have it included, or the, does the language have to change?
That's part of that technology.
And would it cost a lot more to have that?
No, it doesn't cost anything more.
Oh.
It's just something that, it's, it's basically a, a switch that needs to be flipped, if you will.
So that doesn't have to be part of?
So, so we need to do it? What a trans, what a thing for transparency.
No cost, how do you, how can you do that?
No cost to the district.
Do we have to vote on that?
Nothing, I mean, we still, to be clear, we still need to renew the contract with the streaming and hosting provider, but the feature is available. It's just, it hasn't, it hasn't been requested. Yeah, we just need to activate it.
I'm going to do a little bartering here. I would, I will vote yes for this contract, as long as I'm promised that we can activate that feature so the public can.
Mr. Allottic, can you turn on that feature, please?
Yes.
At your earliest convenience for this board meeting.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What a concept.
Bartering? Are there any other questions for Mr. Gorski? I see none. We'll have a roll call.
Once again, Board Action Items A through O under the Business Administrator's Report. Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, on everything except for B, transfer number three. That's, I'm voting no on that.
So noted. Mrs. Arminio?
Oh, uh, yes on everything, no on B.
Mr. Ryback?
Uh, yes on everything except number two, where I have to recuse myself.
Mr. Ru, um, where am I?
Are you lost?
Yes.
Oh.
Um, Mr. Russo, did I call you yet, sir?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Yes, on everything, no on O.
Thank you. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalbonowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through O passes. And once again, I'd like to thank Jerry Tate for all of his attendance at the meetings and the application for the safety grant money will go to good use once again. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the Board President's Report, and I'm just going to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Goodall stated about the visit from Senator Sweeney. During the past summer, Mr. Goodall, Mr. Gorski, and Mr. Ryback had the opportunity to attend the S2 legislative signing, which gave more state funding to underfunded school districts and made the state funding more equitable throughout the district, I mean, throughout the state. Monroe received an additional $2 million, or about a 62% increase in the funding that we had been receiving, the majority of which we went, went back to the taxpayers by a vote by the members of the Board of Education. At that time, they spoke to Senator, State Senator, President Sweeney about funding in Monroe, and gave him an open-ended invitation to visit our school district so we could showcase our programs in our schools to him. This past Friday, President Sweeney took up Monroe on its offer and visited our district. And I believe Mr. Goodall told you already who the invitation list came from, and this was not a district event, but an event that came out of Trenton from Senator Sweeney's office. We took a tour of the special education apartment located in the high school, and Senator Sweeney had an opportunity to speak with the students and the staff about the program and what our students have accomplished and will continue to accomplish. And both the Senator and our state representatives were very much impressed with our students and our special education programs that we can have hold in district. After the tour, we all met in the high school conference room for a roundtable discussion on state funding and how it affects Monroe Township and what we can expect in the future. Senator Sweeney mentioned that Monroe has been, due to the efforts of our legislators, to, in the forefront of discussions about additional state funding, and how our local leaders were very vocal when it came to Monroe and its funding. He also mentioned some of the things that the state was working on to help alleviate the cost of special education, which he understands is a big burden to districts all across New Jersey. They hope to have something in place where they can relieve some of the burden to the school districts. He also said that Monroe can expect additional increases in funding in the next few years to get us to where we are, fully funded fairly. It was mentioned to him about the growing school district, the growing student population, and the need for additional schools in our district, and the senior population who can no longer assume the tax increases for additional building referendums, and hopefully that we could get money from that in the future. And while we're happy, as I said before, we're happy to receive any additional, any additional funding from the state, it is not enough for us. We need to continue to advocate for a new and fair funding formula that will help relieve the tax burden for our taxpayers in Monroe Township. And that concludes my Board President's Report. At this time, we'll go to number 13, other Board of Education business, any member of the Board of Education, Mr. Ryback?
Um, just two things. First one, on, on Tuesday, October 2nd, Mrs. D'Amelio, Mrs. Lang, and I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Workshop on Career and Technical Education at North Brunswick High School. It emphasized the importance of preparing our students, not only for college, but for the world of work. It's no secret that companies have a shortage of skilled workers who command excellent salaries. Just this past Sunday, there was an article in Star Ledger about New Jersey transit shortage of train engineers who can ultimately make $100,000 a year. So it's, it's, right now, it's a matter of conversations about creating these types of programs without certainly losing any stress, emphasis, rather, on, on the academics. We need, we need both. The fact, the second thing I want to just mention is something I noticed today. I want to certainly echo the words of my colleague, Mrs. Arminio, about how important it is for the public to come here, and how much we appreciate you all being here. And when someone comes up to the podium to speak, it's important. There's no such thing as a stupid question. They have that right to speak, and we're interested in what they have to say. But what I noticed today, unfortunately, was some people laughing and making faces as some people were speaking. And I think that's something that we have to stop, and I know my colleagues on the Board would have joined me in saying that we'd appreciate everyone showing respect to whoever is at that podium speaking to this Board of Education. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
Um, I, I just have a question. How, are we paying for a Monroe Township police officer to be here this evening?
There's two.
There are two?
Yes.
We are.
And who authorized that, please?
We had.
I beg your pardon?
Did you want to say?
Yes. It is the Business Administrator's authority to administer the meetings. And based upon reports that I had received, there was an anticipated presence this evening that whether it was a board meeting, or a, an athletic event, or a use of building, I would have required police officers at that event. Now, in some of those instances, they, they get charged for those services. Here, we have the rates approved already by the Board of Education for the police department, and certainly maintaining order and safety of the occupants is of paramount, paramount en, of importance.
And that, that's, that, that opinion is, is solely at your discretion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what was the threat?
What was the threat?
Yes, sir.
There was supposed to be a large turnout to the meeting based upon estimates of information that was reported, and to maintain safety and order, I, I thought it was appropriate to have the police here.
Okay. And how many security officers do we have? Paid security officers from, from the district? At least two?
I believe there's two here this evening.
Okay. I, I had a, I was very upset last meeting because I think, and Mr. Ryback just talked about people coming up and are engaged citizens. I do not perceive a threat. That's personal. I mean, I don't, I don't think we need armed guards to have our, our children, when our children are here, and when our parents talk. Yes, do people every once in a while get a, a little upset or raise their voices? But I think it sends a very bad message in a democracy such as ours, that we have to put armed guards here, and sometimes our security guards, and I, I'm not being specific, but I think as a matter of procedure, that seems to be happening, that they, in my opinion, accost the members of the public, tell them to be quiet, or move them off. Last week, last month, I'm sorry, they moved them off the podium. I think that's an inappropriate use of the security guard. I, and I'd like to know, I mean, Mr. Russo, months ago, when we were talking about regulations and everything about armed security guards, he, he was asking for a job description, he was asking for what was protocol. We never got that, and now I see four armed people in here, and I think it, it sends a chilling effect on our democracy, on, on the public, and I don't think it's necessary. I respect, my husband was a police officer, I respect the job, I know what it entails. However, I think that under Monroe's current circumstances, we don't have, I, I just think it's an inappropriate use of force.
If I may.
Madam, if, if I overestimated the, the need of security this evening, I apologize, I'll, I'll be more careful in the future. But I have to take exception to one thing you, you said. You used the word accost with reference to our security director's address of a public speaker at the last meeting who had become out of order.
Out of order is not a threat, sir.
Beg, beg pardon. You would be surprised to know that that public speaker actually had, had furnished the security director with a thank you gift basket after that exchange because of the cordial introduction that, that was made afterwards.
There was, there was a physical.
So I don't think there was a, an accosting, forgive me if that's improper use of the word, of anybody at that meeting.
Well, I physically, I saw that, that the person was physically moved away from.
Ms. Arminio, we're discussing personnel now, when you're talking about?
No, I'm, I'm discussing an action that should not be taken.
Right, but you're, what you're taking, what you're, you are doing is a, discussing a pers, person in the district.
Then we need to have a discussion about, about who's choosing.
Ms. Arminio?
Use of force.
I will say to you that after the meeting last time, you requested a meeting?
That's right.
And you, we, we reached out to you?
We haven't, we haven't established a meeting date yet.
Right, because you never responded back to the, twice that you were asked to respond to us.
Right.
Right.
If I can, I'd just like to clarify something, where I think maybe you misinterpreted what I was saying. I was only talking about this evening when I saw some people laughing at somebody who was at the podium. Has nothing to do with security or any of that. I just think it was disrespectful. That's all I was referring to.
I, I think it's disrespectful when the public is, isn't free to speak.
I have a, I have a question.
I, I believe we've always let our public be free to speak. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Russo?
Mr. Gorski mentioned that he got some information, and that's why he acted and brought the security in. Can you share that information? I mean, where do you get this information from?
I could share that information, but for the efficiency of the meeting, I, I don't, I don't think it's productive. So I apologize if my estimate was on the heavier side, and I'll do a better job of estimating the need for security going forward.
But I'm just wondering, what is the nature of it all? How do you collect this information? From where?
Madam, I respectfully decline to answer that question. It has to do with security, and, again, I overestimated the need for tonight, but the safety of the members of the public attending the meeting, as well as the members of the Board of Education, as well as the children that were here before, should be everybody's first priority. And it was mine in this instance, and if I overestimated and I, I wasted a couple hundred dollars, trust me, I've more than made up for it.
That's, that's, that's understood. Concerned that children and the people who come here, the public, should be taken into consideration, but I'm asking, where did you get the information from?
I think you've asked that question, and Mr. Gorski answered that question to the best of his ability.
What was the answer? What was the answer?
His, his response right now is he's not responding to that question due to.
Oh, so I didn't get an answer? Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Well, he gave you an answer due to safety and security reasons.
Okay, so I didn't get an answer? That's what you're saying?
He gave you an answer. Not the answer you were looking for, but he gave you an answer.
Okay, let's go.
Is there any other, any other?
I, I just have, just something quick. So the, and I, I do appreciate our administration having a meeting with our, with our elected officials, with, with the, with the senators, and, you know, with Sweeney and, and Senator Greenstein, and, and the rest of them. But, but this is the second meeting where I was excluded as a Fair Funding Committee Chair. So there was a meeting that the Board President attended in, I think, May, that was held at one of our schools, and I was not alerted to that meeting. I did go to the Om Patel Memorial that night, so I wouldn't have gone to that meeting anyway, even if I had been invited, because that, to me, took precedence over, over a sham funding meeting, to, to be honest. But I wasn't invited to that. Then the follow-up is that this one, I wasn't invited to. Now, listen, I, my ego isn't that big that I think I need to be invited to these things, but as the Chair, I have to tell you that we have some people that are on our Fair Funding Committee here that work very hard, that were liaisons between our Fair Funding Committee and the, and those elected officials. And it would have been nice to at least be able to tell them that this, this kind of stuff was, that these meetings were happening, so that they could have, they could at least be aware of it. It's marginalized the committee. I think it's, it's, it's also marginalized the, the effort that they've put out and, and how hard they've worked, the nights that they've spent, the weekends that they've spent on their own time to go and do this. They're not being paid for that. And, and, and so I'm just, from my standpoint, I'm just going to tell you that I think that this was a political thing, you know, to, to, because they didn't want to, you guys, or they didn't want anybody there that was going to ask real questions and maybe hold their feet to the fire. And maybe that's why the invitation didn't go, because maybe there'd be real questions asked. So I'm respectfully going to resign from that committee. I asked that commit, I asked for that Fair Funding Committee to be created when I first got sworn in, in January 2017, and I am asking now to be removed from that, and then we'll see where it goes from there. But I'm not going to waste any more of my time in, with a political, you know, dog and pony show. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella. Point taken and noted. Point taken and noted. Any other business from the Board of Education? Okay, then we'll go to the public forum again. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. We will adhere to four minutes.
Again, good evening. Ram Ranat, Six Ove and Strive, Monroe. A lot of points, again, four minutes. So, the first point, Mr. Chiarella, I think you should take back your resignation from the Fair Funding. We need people like you to be on that committee. The, we, the public were disappointed that the head of the Fair Funding Committee, Mr. Chiarella, was not invited to this meeting. You know, so, Madam President, could you provide an explanation why he was not invited to that meeting?
Because the invitations came from Trenton. It was not a board invite. It was not a board activity. It was an event.
Yeah, but there's nothing...
I had no right to...
But there's nothing preventing you from bringing folks off of your team. This happens in corporate America every time. You can bring who you want from your team.
I could not invite people. It would be like you inviting me to your house and me bringing ten friends.
Yeah, but this is your house. They came to your house.
This was not a, this was...
Certainly, even as superintendent, I acknowledge that I would have preferred to have the whole board there, including Mr. Chiarella, as Chair of that committee. The invitation from the Senate office was a limited invitation. And I guess you have to weigh whether it was important to have that dialogue with them or make a stand. And in this particular case, my recommendation was to continue with the meeting and have the meeting and lobby for our equitable funding. And it was an opportunity to showcase to our legislators that the work that they're doing is not in vain, and that we use the money appropriately and excellently. And so, admittedly, I would have preferred...
Mr. Goodall, I don't want to, I'm not cutting you off because my time is going, right? I'm sorry. That's why I'm being a bit rude or whatever. But, see, the message you're sending to the public, right? As Ken Chiarella said, so many people have spent a lot of time working on the fair.
I totally recognize that.
The top was on fair funding, right? Wasn't this such a big mess?
It was, it was part of my dialogue with them, that so many people, past and present, have fought the fight.
Okay.
So, I do recognize that, sir.
Second, in that meeting, were there any prepared remarks made by the Madam President or you? And can those be made public?
Just to answer for myself, I had no prepared remarks. It was a roundtable discussion where Senator Sweeney asked questions of our students, our PTO president, the high school principal, myself, Mrs. Kalapanowicz. There was nothing prepared. It was spontaneous.
No, I did not have anything prepared either. I know Mr. Ryback was there. He had nothing prepared, but he asked, the questions were asked, and we answered them. And we also made sure that we explained to him what the problems were in Monroe, that there, the senior community, the building of our schools that are needed. And he understood all that. So, we had that opportunity to talk to him about Monroe's specific...
Okay. I guess the, my thing is, again, if there had been prepared remarks, again, the public would have benefited from this. And with prepared remarks, this was such a great opportunity for you to make that case. As someone was saying, what are the issues with the fair funding formula? Get into that level of detail and have that tough conversation. As the lady said, for 10 years, we have been fighting this with no success. So, something is wrong in our strategy, and we are losing opportunities with this. Again, just interesting, let me move forward. On some of the reports, I saw that we have classrooms with greater than 25 students. Do we have stats on how many classrooms in the middle school and high school where we have made more than 25 students this year?
I, we did request of the high school and middle school administration to create room utilization. And one of the requests had to do with the potential of adding additional trailers. So, we're hoping to have that report for the November meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Prakash Parav, 33 Denahdhar. I want the public to know that we are supposed to get $9 million per year from the state. And it was stated that from 2008 onward, they have frozen it. And we got very minimum. Now, we have been told by the legislators that we will get our $9 million stepwise in next five years. So, they are not doing any favor to us, I tell you. Giving $2 million is a not big favor. We, they owe us this year another $7 million they are not going to give us. Okay? So, that is the fact. So, no glory. We all fought, and they gave us only $2 million. Wish they would have given nine, and they had to give more. And we will work on it. There are flaws. My friend Ambika wrote an email to Mr. Gorski showing where there are defects in the formula, and we will come to you. We'll follow with the meeting with you, because we have looked at the process, we have looked at other schools. So, we want to discuss with you. You are the expert, so we will discuss with you. Okay, this...
Prakash, I would be happy to meet with you or anybody else as a subject matter that I enjoy speaking about, so...
Thank you. Your heart is there. I know it. Yeah. Now, there is, this is the topic everyone is talking about in the town. I'm not afraid of it. I'll never be afraid of it. There is a recording on the Facebook which says that some of the, our leadership here received an input from the mayor, which was regarding the timing and the content of the referendum which took place in March this year. The referendum was supposed to take place in November last year, but we were having council elections. So, in order to interfere referendum and the council election, so it was moved to March. And the content of the referendum, we all came here in October last year and said, include high school and middle school. But only middle school was included. And what happened? The people who wanted high school, they didn't vote for it. The teachers were upset, didn't vote for the referendum, and we lost the referendum only by 143 votes. We would have won it with major, major if we would have included high school. So, what is happening is we, the BOE, has to be independent organization. We have to take the decisions based on the children, taxpayers, and the parents' interest, not because of the political reasons. The politicians try to get their benefits. We are the independent organization. I'm sure that was going on in the public, so today, we have police officers here. So, there is nothing to hide about. Okay? My request is, don't take political advice here. Even in the election, I'm seeing the politicians are dividing. No. The BOE leadership next year, I want to be unified. The leader who has to keep all the 10 people united, not divided. Thank you very much.
Good evening. George Gunkelman, 5 Kelly Court. I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the mold remediation at the Marasco Center. I'd like to know what its current status is, and I'd like to know what the cost to date is for that work. And thirdly, I'd like to know if there's an explanation as to how this happened. Specifically, was the HVAC turned off or run less than normal? And who made that decision?
Ms. Gorski?
May I answer Mr. Gunkelman's question? First, to the costs, the...
The first question was status. Is the work complete?
Okay, status. Beg your pardon, yes. Status, the work is completed. We have had inspections of the area, and it is, has been deemed mold-free. So, the work is completed. Your second question, I believe, went to cost. We were, proposed a $108,000 contract from a mold remediation company, which has work off the charts right now because the particular environmental conditions of this summer has led to mold growth across the state. There were many school districts that were late in opening and are spending big dollars on mold remediation, which is underinsured by intent of the insurance companies. There are very strict limits on the amount of insurance you can get on mold remediation. So, we negotiated the $108,000 contract down to, not to exceed $75,000. And there were also costs of the engineer from Environmental Safety Management who did independent testing at the board's request. And I, forgive me, I don't have those exact time charges. I don't know if he furnished us with the bill yet for that. But if I had to estimate the total, sir, I would say that it is well under $100,000. And I got an insurance check for the maximum we could get of $25,000 this week. So, the district is out of pocket approximately $75,000. As far as how did this happen? It is, it was a very damp, wet, moist summer. The conditions are ripe for mold development, particularly in the Performing Arts Center where there's no windows. We do have a schedule that is monitored by a professional organization called Energy for America, who the board contracts with to manage our energy costs, including lighting, air conditioning, and heating per school room down to that specific level. We had a schedule set up that has been effective in the past for managing the air conditioning over the summer in the Performing Arts Center. But we were compounded with another problem of some ferocious storms and power outages, which we seem to be very subject to, especially off of Perrineville Road for some reason. So, the constant power outages did cause some dysfunction of the air conditioning equipment, which was quickly remediated, but there were times where it was not running to design. And again, that was because of the frequent power outages that we had experienced over the summer.
So, the program that you contract for does make no adjustments for weather?
No. Does not. It does not. It manages the utilities to each school, each classroom, shuts off classroom if it's not in use. For example, like this room would be reduced in the amount of air conditioning or heating needed.
I understand how those programs work, but they, you know, I mean, you get what you contract for. Why wouldn't you contract for something? Or at least advise them that you're having a wetter-than-normal season? I mean, we all live here.
Yes.
The idea, I mean, you don't need to tell this hall that the electricity went off a few times. We know it. We live here. You know, you don't need to tell us that it was wetter than normal. We all know that. We live here.
And to your point, Mr. Gunkelman, we have come up with a plan going forward to better address this and make sure that there are dehumidifying stations and, we've taken up an issue with JC Penel also. But we will better manage this going forward.
It just seems that issue, that after issue that come up, there's nobody responsible for the results and/or no one that wants to answer the question as to who's responsible. It's hard for us to understand when there's lack of accountability for things that are costing the taxpayers money. One last comment, and that would simply be that there's a lot of talk coming out that would, you know, saying that Trenton doesn't understand the condition of our taxpayers. They have our tax returns. They know exactly what, how much money we make. It's silly to talk about it that they don't appreciate how poor we are. They know how much money we have. That's just a silly defense, and it's somewhat insulting.
Ambika Sukla, 2 Sierra Court. So, I want to go back to the topic that I was trying to discuss earlier. So, it looks like we have spent nearly five years and possibly will spend eight years trying to come up with a referendum and, you know, even get started with schools. It seems no one has any idea how much money has been wasted in that effort so far. When a topic comes to fair funding, I was going to say something, but shut me out. I did spend, you know, hours researching fair funding, you know, going through data from, you know, six, seven different sites, putting them together and reconstructing the school formula from ground up, from scratch, trying to pinpoint exactly where the issues are. And I sent a mail to everyone in the board. The only person who responded is Ken. There was no other response from anyone, not even an acknowledgement from anyone else that I sent this email to. And it looks like he just resigned, and he didn't seem to, it didn't seem to matter to anyone when he said that. I don't know how. So, given, you just admitted that, you know, you have, you don't know anything about the formula, but you somehow are fighting for fair funding. So, put, when I put all of this together, I would, you know, give most of my three minutes that is left to try to understand, and this is a question that I've been asking myself time and again, as we are getting closer to the BOE elections. Why, why should we continue to have faith in your leadership?
That's a question for the Board of Education.
It's a question for you. You are the President of the Board of Education. Madam President, this is a direct question to you.
That is a question for the Board of Education. They decide, and they vote on leadership every year at the reorganization meeting.
I'm giving an opportunity for you to tell us why we specifically, personally, from your point of view, like, if I were you, I would probably let somebody else who can do this job better do it.
Well, were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
I, I got the contents and the gist of what you said, and...
Well, I'll read it again if you would like.
Yes, sure, please.
Because this is, this is my accomplishments over the last 30 years in this district.
I'm talking about the last eight years that I have been here, and so far, I haven't seen any accomplishment worth to be proud of.
You haven't seen the new high school open up? You haven't seen an increase in curriculum?
I'm talking about the last, last eight years.
You haven't seen that?
I'm, I'm giving...
This school's only seven years old.
Madam President, I'm giving an opportunity to tell me, answer me this question. So, I'm asking you that I've been here for eight years, and so far, I haven't, all I've heard is excuses. You know, I just heard Mr. Gorski say 10 times that, oh, you know what? We had mold, so what? All the other people had mold. You know, we had X, so what? Everybody else had X. You know, if my son comes home and he says he gets a C, not that he does, and he says that, well, I got a C because everybody else did, that's not a good answer. That's just not a good answer. I really don't want to hear excuses like that when I come here.
I will read you my accomplishments if you would like.
Sure, please, please.
Okay, when you're finished, I will read this.
I am finished.
Because I don't want to take up your time.
I am finished. I'm asking you this question.
And I'll read the whole thing again after public forum.
Well, I would like you to focus for the last eight years.
And I will do that after public forum is over.
All right.
I will be glad to do that.
Sure, thanks.
Roger Maney, 22 Harrigan Avenue. Mr. Chiarella, I wish you'd reconsider your resignation, but I admire you as an intelligent man who knows what he needs to do. And the old saying of, why do I bang my, stop banging my head against the wall? Because it feels good when I stop. Madam President, you said that you refused to resign over false allegations. I heard an audio of a woman speaking, saying she was told things by Mayor Tamboro last night. Are you saying that was not you on the audio?
I don't know what audio you're referring to, so I can't, I can't...
The audio on Facebook that has been out, ma'am, and I'm sure...
I did not see the audio on Facebook.
Would you like me to play it for you?
No, we, we...
Okay, there's an audio of you saying that Mayor Tamboro did not want the resolute, the referendum to be posted in November because he had four council seats up and he didn't want to lose them and push it to March. Okay? You were on audio saying it? Now, so, if you're pretending that you don't know what audio you're on, I'm not that stupid. You can lie to everybody else, but I don't believe you. Okay? So, you've politicized the school board.
First of all...
This is my four minutes. I gave you...
It is. I'm letting you speak.
I gave you your 15 to pat yourself on the back for doing a job that you chose to do. Okay?
I was elected to do this.
I don't get a pat on the back every day I leave work for doing what I'm supposed to do. Okay? I admire you for what you've done, but at the same time, there comes a point where, if you've been in this for 30 years, when Monroe had 8,000 people, we're now at 49,000. You may not be best suited for the job at 49,000 people. Okay? And from what I heard from that audio last night, you're just following what the mayor wants to do, and you've politicized the school board. I, I see the way you treat certain people and the manner and tone that you use with certain people, and there's a great divide. And I think you should rule with principles over personalities rather than what Mayor Tamboro wants, because you're doing a horrible disservice to the children by staying on.
[applause]
Gazala Bora, 1 Miko Drive. I have a question about the referendum, and I think it's a procedural question. You can't hear me?
Yeah.
Better now?
Yeah.
Good evening. Gazala Bora, 1 Miko Drive. We went through a lot of heartache, a lot of arguments, a lot of, you know, divide in the town for the previous referendum, and there was a lot of assumptions made as to why just the middle school was put on that referendum. Now, with current, with facts that have come out in the recent past, I would like to ask a question to understand the procedure and the power of the Board of Education. I was involved in the Student Growth Advisory Committee. There was a parallel steering committee at that time. We had hired consultants, the Ross Haber Associates, to do our, you know, study of our growth, student growth. We had a lot of information that we could use to, to design the referendum. And most of the recommendations included three schools, and the need for the middle school, high school, and elementary school were not ever put at a certain level by the committees. And I think the Board of Ed also agreed to put the middle school and the high school in the referendum. I'm thinking that. Now, hypothetically speaking, if the Board of Ed decides to go for a referendum for a middle school and a high school, and the mayor does not agree to it, what is the power of the Board of Ed to go over the mayor and put that on the ballot? That's my question. Can the Board of Ed go against the mayor and put something that has been recommended by several committees and consultants and all the data that the Board of Ed has been, has access to? If they decide to put on a referendum two schools and the mayor says, "No, I just want one," does the Board of Ed have the power to go ahead and put two schools on the referendum still? That's my question to the Board of Ed right now.
The Board of Education acts on the recommendation of the administration. We, as a board, none of us have the power to say, "This is what we want on a referendum. This is what we don't want on a referendum."
So, let me rephrase my question.
We do have the power to, to put whatever, what the administration has the power to put whatever they wish on a referendum, the board votes on that.
So, I will rephrase my question then. If the administration recommends something, the Board of Ed also thinks on the same lines, but the town mayor does not agree to it, what choice does the Board of Ed have? I'm asking a very black-and-white question here, and you know why I'm asking that, but I would really like to know the answer. Can we go against the mayor for the sake of our students?
We can. If the, if the administration feels that they have the right plan, they will bring it to the Board of Education in a resolution on an agenda, and the board will vote for that.
Okay, so there is...
I do not create a referendum. Mr. Mayo does not create a referendum. Ms. Arminio does not create the referendum. It comes from the administration.
I do know that, Madam President.
They are the experts, and they work with the experts.
I do know the process, Madam President. I do know that recommendations are made, and then the Board of Ed, I'm repeating your words right now, and the Board of Ed votes on the recommendations and picks one. I do know that, and I do know that there was interference from the town government. And I do know that because of that, we've lost not one year, but two years. And that is the reason I'm asking that what power does this Board of Ed that we have elected have over the town government? And I know you have the power. I know that you are an autonomous body, but we have, you have not acted as one. There is all the proof that the town was directing the Board of Ed and the district administration to go a certain way, and that, that was what was done. And today, we are two years too late, and the blame is going to be put on people like me who refused to vote on the first referendum because we called, we believed that that was the wrong solution. But no, what happened in the last, March 2018 to now, what progress have we made on the referendum? Very little. It was a lot of asking questions, but what, what came back is, is very sad.
At this time, your time is up, and we will go to the next person.
Thank you.
Ross Limbrotzky, 57 C Yorkshire Drive. I live in an adult community. I would like to say that I'm listening, and what I would like to say is that, from my perspective, the mayor gave you land. He gave you the, wherever that golf thing is, he gave that to you so you could go forward. The only people that publicized the referendum were Kathy and Mr. Gorski. No one else from this Board of Education came to any adult community in this whole township, to the senior center, to the rec center, when we had candidates speaking and when we asked for Board of Education members to come and talk. So, you're going to do a referendum. We want to back a referendum, but get out and get the vote out. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to correct, I'm sorry, she, she gave misinformation.
And I'm going to correct her because I know that Mr...
And she's on the board, she's on the planning board, too. She should say so.
And she has the right to make her statement.
Absolutely. But it should be accurate.
And I'm also, I'm also the chairperson of the mayor's advisory adult community...
There we go.
...committee, and I'm speaking for them, too.
Thank you.
Ms. Arminio, this is public forum, and we're going to leave it. She has the right to make her statement, and if she felt that she hasn't seen anybody else at her, then that's her statement.
But, Madam, that's, but, Madam, you correct people when they, when it's in your best interest, you correct people's information.
I do, I, I answer questions. Next.
Taking a deep breath. Good mor, good evening or good night. Andy Pelori, 16 St. James Street. I'm not even sure where to begin. I supported the referendum and did whatever I can do within my power, thinking that that's the right thing to do, because that's what the Board of Education has put forward. If I'm to be told or proven that a political agenda is behind it, that'll probably be the biggest disappointment that I have experienced in this township since. I'm not here to question who put the video clip up or the audio clip, whatever the clip was that they were talking about, but I just want to know the facts. Was the referendum delayed deliberately because of the election?
Madam, may I, may I address this?
Sure.
Because I was privy to most of the discussions pertaining to the referendum. I believe all of them having to do with the mayor and the township. I will tell you, like all of the stakeholders in this community, hundreds that participated in a democratic process on the Student Growth Advisory Committee, the mayor also offered his opinion, recommendation, suggestion, and support for the referendum. But I want to make this clear. Under no circumstance did the mayor influence the date that this referendum was to be held or the components of this referendum, specifically it only being a middle school. The mayor does not have that power, and in the 20 years that I've been employed by the school district, we've had a collaborative relationship with the township. They have never come down on this board with a heavy hand or forced us to do anything. The only time we would ever need assistance from the township is if we exceeded our borrowing capacity for the size of the referendum. They could lend us some of theirs. But in this instance here, to secure a very rare piece of land, we asked, I was privy, I was at a lunch where we asked the mayor for help, and Wayne Hamilton, the township business administrator, for help to consider buying the land for us. And that came from the suggestion of our bond counselor from McCarteran English at the time. That was not my idea.
It is my impression, and that's the reason I'm running for the Board of Education, is because 56% of the township budget goes to the Board of Education. In my opinion, humble opinion, maybe I'm wrong, Board of Education is an autonomous body, so is the township administration. They both need to function separately, but at the same time, coordinate with each other. And I see the overcrowding of the schools because of lack of communication. That's what I made into a big pitch about my campaign. But for me to stand here and realize last night that there's some clip was put out, somebody's influencing how the Board of Education should conduct business, is really disturbing. And I would like to get a little bit more clarification on that, and I, sure, I'll take your word for it, Business Administrator Gorski, for saying it, but if there is an evidence, I want to see the evidence, because I'm a little bit tired of he said, she said, they said, you know. I came in front of the board in the past two and asked the same exact questions, and I got some clarification on things, but I need, I think I am at a point where I need some evidence to see who is doing what in the Board of Education. Thank you.
Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. Can we play the famous clip so that we can get down to the bottom of this?
We are not playing any tapes.
Of course not.
Krishna De Kalay, Levin Jake Place. I'll ask my questions right there, two questions primarily. One, when you met with the elected representatives, where did you leave after the meeting? And two, regarding the referendum that we are planning for next April, April or March, March of next year. You've mentioned that we are going to go and do a media blitz starting January or after the holidays. I'm just trying to understand what, are we using the same plan like we did last year? Which one are we emphasizing on? Because there are now two options that the township presidents could pick, both the high school and the middle school, or just the middle school. And the other thing I have is, do you have the proposed architectural plans for the high school? How the classrooms would look like or not?
Madam, if I may, we do have architectural plans for the high school. We do not have them present at the meeting. If you wish to make an appointment, you are welcome to come in and review them.
Sure. About the first question, what, how did we leave off the meeting with the elected representatives?
Can you repeat that?
When you met with the elected representatives regarding fair funding, right?
On Friday?
Yeah.
Yes.
How did, how did we end the meeting off? Where did we leave it off? Are we following up with them? Are they giving us an update?
I recall specifically that there was a recommendation made by Senate President Sweeney to work towards additional state funding or state aid for the specific category of special education funding. We said we more than qualify. He was very impressed with our programs and our teachers, and that is how the meeting was concluded. Senate President Sweeney was working towards additional state legislation for funding for special education aid that Monroe would be eligible for.
Would that be, when would that be coming in? Certainly, the budget for this year has passed. Would that be a part of next year's budget?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have that information.
Okay. And the second question I asked was, what's the plan about the media blitz for the high school and the middle school referendum in March?
We're, we're working on a plan. I know they had a steering committee meeting Monday. I was not there. I was very ill. So, the next committee meeting, I think it's November 1st, something like that, and they, we will be discussing how, the plan for communication to the public.
And would, I think, are we...
It's the 1st? It's, it's November 1st. And, and like I think I said a couple of meetings ago, we invited the MTEA to be a part of it. I think they're being a very helpful part of what we're going to be doing, and they're going to, we're going to be using them to get the information out also.
And the question, a related question to that is, how are we selling this referendum to the public? Because there are two options now. I mean, high school and a middle school, or a middle school only. Which one are, is the Board of Ed...
We're putting both of them on the ballot, and we're letting the public decide what they feel that they can support. It's a two-question thing. It's an either-or. Either you vote for the middle school, or you vote for the middle school and the high school addition.
Okay. So, does that mean that the middle school is a more higher priority than the high school?
The administration believes that the middle school is the highest priority.
Madam, the, the evidence, the number of unhoused students, which is students in enrollment beyond the capacity of the school, demonstrates that need, that the middle school is a higher priority. There's more flexibility, as Mr. Goodall could certainly speak to, in managing a slightly less overcrowded high school than there is in a middle school.
And how many, I mean, all the, all the students in high school housed?
May I pardon? How much does it cost?
I mean, are, are all these school, students in high school housed, or are there any unhoused students?
We have unhoused students at the high school, just like we have at the middle school.
That's correct.
But there, with different kinds of scheduling, we can cope with that a lot easier than we can at the middle school. There is no more room at the middle school at all.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Doug Boy, 4 Tamarack Road. I live in an adult community, and I'm sorry that the lady left that made a comment, so I just wanted to clarify that the Board of Education made every effort possible to make presentations in all the adult communities prior to the last referendum. I know they made a presentation in Regency where I live. I also know they made a presentation in Concordia, I believe. And there were other communities that they may have made presentations in where I was not present. But I can tell you that some communities discourage these things. They make it very, very difficult, and I do not understand why they do that, and I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed with the mayor. They also do, they discourage candidates for the Board of Education from providing their literature within the community, so that the residents of those communities don't have the information that would benefit them in terms of making an informed decision. I, I think this is unfortunate. I don't know why the adult communities behave in that fashion, but some of them do. So, just, I want all the members of the public to be very clear that the Board of Education made every effort to make presentations in every adult community for the prior referendum. A suggestion, this is on a totally different topic, but one that was dealt with tonight. I think it would be helpful, the next time we have a presentation on the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, that there be some comparison with the prior year, so that the public and the members of the board can get some sense of, are we having essentially fewer of these incidences reported? Are we having more? Is it somewhat stable? I mean, we have a school-wide program to reduce harassment, intimidation, bullying. Is that program being effective in reducing the number of those incidences? I, I think that would be very, very helpful. Also, the last gentleman spoke, brought up this matter of unhoused students. I think it's important for the public to understand what that term means, so I would ask that someone on the board please explain what an unhoused student count actually is. Thank you.
Madam...
Thank you, Mr. Boy.
Thank you. For clarification, please don't confuse unhoused students with homeless students. They are not the same thing by any means. Unhoused students is simply students enrolled in a particular school beyond the capacity of the school. That is considered an unhoused student. It's an important factor and metric that the state uses to determine eligible costs of the project and also the level of debt service aid that they are going to provide. So, once again, to be clear, unhoused students is students enrolled in the school beyond the capacity of the building.
Raguchi Touri, 23 Green Ice Street. Madam President, just an observation and a suggestion. Based on, I've been attending these meetings for past one and a half years, and the common perception among the people who are attending these meetings, as well as people outside, the politics are influencing these board decisions. It is, you know, as a president, I request you to step up and try to clear that, you know, Board of Education is the last player that I would like to have any political influences. The decisions that we make should be beneficial to the students, to the community, and should not be driven by, like, political agenda. To back up my reasoning... To back up my reasoning is, the way Mr. Chiralla was neglected for the meeting, I know as a president, if your core team member is missing, probably, if I were you in a position, probably I would have stepped up and say like, you know, hey, one of the core county members is missing, you know, you need to bring him into the, into the, like, you know, meeting. Such events, such, such scenarios will confirm that a lot of political influences are taking place on the board. I request you to, as a leader, as a president of this board, I request you to, like, you know, clear that perception what people have. This board has to be independent of political influences. And I request to Chiralla, Mr. Chiralla, please reconsider resignation. You know, we need people like you to be on the board and help us out. And second request, I work for a nonprofit organization called Manabadi, which teaches a South Indian language, which is the fastest-growing South Indian language in the United States right now. Looks like my committee or my board has reached out to Mr. Gorski for using the facilities of either Oak Tree or Apple Garden for running classes on Friday evenings. When we did a comparison analysis, like, you know, they were declined for multiple reasons. One, it is not registered. This, this organization is started in California. It's a nationwide organization. They have a, these are nonprofit organizations, don't have franchises, but they do teach at local level. That is one. And second is, the cost that we were asked to incur for running those classes were way high compared to the neighboring school districts, be it South Downs Creek, or Blainsboro, or Best Windsor. Why is it, like, you know, it's a, it's a nonprofit organization, what it takes for the board to, you know, get an easy approval, like, you know, why, why do our prices are so high compared to other, other neighboring school districts?
Madam?
Yes.
To the gentleman's question, in order to have eligibility to use the school district facilities, which are in great demand because they, they have a very attractive forum for outside events, you have to be a nonprofit organization and you have to be headquartered in Monroe Township. Quite often, we have outside of Monroe Township headquartered organizations who claim they have a member that lives in Monroe, therefore they should have the entitlement of the publicly-funded school system to enjoy. And that is not how the policy currently is written. You have to, once again, be a nonprofit and headquartered in Monroe Township. The second question is the fee structure. The Monroe Township Board of Education does not profit off of the use of building fee schedule whatsoever, with the exception of the $100 application fee. But we have a full-time person who manages this, so that partially offsets their salary, if you wanna look at it that way. We had professionals, again, Energy for America being one, who came in and told us what hourly rates for utility usage is based upon each room that we were considering using during use of building. So, and then, in summary, the Monroe Township Board of Education recoups the taxpayer costs only through use of building fees and does not profit off of it. So if you think it's expensive to reimburse the Board of Education, you could imagine what it costs to run a school district of this size with all the facilities we have.
Even my organization was ready to take up their high fees, too, but the clause that you just mentioned, that the, it has to be headquartered at local Monroe Township, we did not follow the same rule for other classes, too, like Hindi Mahavijalaya or Hindi USA. Why that new rule for the...
Yes, sir. Hindi, Hindi USA was grandfathered in because they had provisions in place before the policy was changed. I did not make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
Peter Tofano, 10 Catherine Street, Monroe Township. My first question is, how much did the BOE spend on a public relations firm for the referendum? So far, as the day...
Do you know that one?
There was no public relation firm for the referendum. We had a particular person...
Marketing, some marketing person.
...come in and facilitate, who billed the Board of Education, but there was no specific firm for that purpose.
Have we hired any township employees to assist with the referendum?
Not to my knowledge. No. The answer's no.
Okay. My last question is, if, if Board President was accused of such a heinous act, why would she refuse to play audio that can exonerate her from that claim?
Because...
Madam? Because the veracity and the full context of that recording cannot be determined, that's why.
Who determines that?
And what you have, what reference to, is a very deceiving caption that is untruthful.
Well, who makes that determination? Shouldn't the public have, should hear that, and then a determination could be made?
That's my opinion. The public, the public can make their own determination. I would just suggest that anybody who wants to weigh in on this topic, get all the facts into your homework. Don't take what's being sold to you on social media.
Well, that's, that's fine. I, I understand what you're saying to me. But for the residents that are now hearing this, I think that they should be able to hear the audio and then ask questions in regards to the audio so we can clear it up. Why, why are we all, why would you want us to all assume, because there, all the facts are not out, that you didn't do anything wrong? I mean, that you did do something wrong. Wouldn't you want to hear the audio and then be able to explain it? This way, people get the facts and can make the right decisions.
This is not the venue for us to listen to audio tapes.
Why?
Because it is not.
But with a microphone, it'll play it. I mean, everybody can hear it.
Madam, I, I...
I don't think it's gonna cause a riot, and we need a couple cops to come during it, but...
Madam, that's...
Yeah, that's it. No more comments.
Very well.
No comment?
We have no comment.
Okay, thank you.
Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. Through an Oprah request, I received the investigation report that Mr. Goodall did on the Board of Ed hate packet. I would, just wanted to go through it. During the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, August 22, 2018, the Acting Superintendent of Schools was requested to investigate circumstances regarding Board of Ed mail and its contents of a packet of community emails, letters, and police reports related to Public Resident Number One. The Board of Education members were sent Board of Ed business mail that included the packet on Friday, August 17, 2018. On August 15, 2018, Mrs. Smith, the board attorney, was delivered a package addressed to the Monroe Township Board of Education by Public Resident Number Two. The contents of the letters and emails were an attempt to influence the board, board's decision not to recognize the Monroe Township Middle School Parents Staff Association. Public Resident Number Two collected letters, emails, and police reports related to Public Resident Number One. Public Resident Number Three requested police reports through an Oprah request and delivered them to Public Resident Number Two. Public Resident Number Two delivered the packet to the Board of Ed attorney on the morning of August 15, 2018. At the August 22 meeting, Mr. Ryback brought forth the packet in the discussion against the MTMS PSA being approved for building use. Mr. Mayo wholeheartedly fought for the name of the packet organizer to remain anonymous. Through my own investigation, speaking with people who were approached and refused to write for the packet, as well as people who were involved, I found out that Public Resident Number One is myself. Public Resident Number Three, I found through an Oprah request at the Police Department, was Regina Giochimini, and Public Resident Number Two was Rupesiegel, who's running for the Board of Education.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, at this time, I'm was closing public forum. And I, while I did promise to read my opening again, it is in the record, I am not going to do that, although I will just say to the person who said I've been here too long, I was re-elected last year.
Put it on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Through years, I mean, it's something to be proud of.
I am very proud of my record.
I would do that.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
Next schedule.
Okay, um, no, closed session? Do we have a closed session?
Madam Board President, in terms of closed session, I'm happy to report, there were no incidents or reporting of HIB in Monroe Township schools, so there is no reason to have a closed session.
Thank you very much. So then our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be November, Tuesday, Tuesday, just, just notice that, Tuesday, November 20, 2018, 7:00 PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn.
Almost, second.
Mr. Chiralla, Mr. Ryback, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then at this time, the meeting is adjourned.